All right, all right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
It's over here.
Oh, they moved that.
Oh, they moved me.
They moved that, yeah.
All right, ready to go? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready? All right, thanks. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. And everyone's agenda is the same. All right, announcements.
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. The May 4th, 2026 Annual Town Meeting Warrant is currently open for citizen warrant article submittals through Monday, November 17th at 4:00 PM. Town Council will be available for citizen warrant article consultations. He was available this morning from 10:00 to noon, and he will be available tomorrow, the October 16th, from 4:00 to 6:00. These are Zoom links, and people can email the town manager email for that information. We have a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day on October 25th from 9:00 to noon at 188 Maticet Road, and there's more information on the town website and the Select Board agenda as to that event. We have a survey out on our Island Home. It's a short online survey. It's open until October 31st, and feedback will help us determine the best path forward. That information is also on the Select Board meeting agenda. We have a special town meeting coming up on Tuesday, November 4th, starts at 5:00 PM at the high school, and that information is also on the agenda. The Year- Round Deed Restriction Pilot Program has just opened. The Affordable Housing Trust is offering financial incentives to preserve or create year-round housing. Eligible homeowners, property owners, and home buyers may now apply. The details and applications are on the town website and on the Select Board meeting agenda, and that's it for announcements.
All right, great, thank you. All right, any Select Board announcements or comments? Okay, seeing none. The public comments were not ready from last week, so those will be ready in a future time. Public comment? Anyone here to public comment?
Good evening to the Select Board and fellow residents. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening.
All right, can we get your name for the?
I'm getting her. My name is Stephanie Correa, and I own Stephanie's on Main Street, and I care deeply about the vitality of our downtown area. First, I'd like to acknowledge the importance of free expression and public assembly. This happens to do with the peaceful demonstration that is happening Saturday at the top of Main Street at 3:00, or sorry, noon, that should go on till 3:00 or 4:00, or who knows how long it will go on. Peaceful demonstrations and rallies are cornerstones of our democracy, and I respect everyone's right to make their voice heard. However, the proposed location for the upcoming rally on Saturday in the heart of the business district raises some significant concerns. This area is home to dozens of small businesses that rely on foot traffic, customer access, and the sense of safety in order to operate successfully. These types of gatherings unintentionally disrupt commerce, block parking, and create logistical challenges that impact both workers and customers. The goal should be to strike a balance supporting civic engagement and maintaining a healthy, functioning business community. We all want our downtown to remain both vibrant, both a vibrant economic center and a place where voices can be heard respectfully and safely. I urge the council and event organizers to reconsider the rally location so that we can uphold both our democratic values and the well-being of our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? And someone will have to tell me if there's anyone I'm lying to.
Hi, Amy Eldridge. I have two comments. I just want to piggyback on Stephanie's. You know, it kind of stinks. We just came off a really bad weekend, which should have been a really good weekend for retail downtown due to the storm. And I would just understand the First Amendment right, freedom of speech and protesting, and like she said, but I think it could be a better location to not harm the local businesses again. It seems like that corridor of Main Street has taken a hit quite a few times since the power outage of Stroll and all that kind of stuff. So I would just like to reiterate what she said, that it's not a great location, and to tie up one of the last, maybe hopefully, good weekends for foot traffic before Stroll would be terrible for the different businesses on Main Street. My next question is in regards to some comments I made last week about the Loran Station. I was curious what the rental rate is for dormitory-style living versus town employee traditional housing, like a unit that like maybe a department head might live in. What is the rent structure for dormitory-style living, like the lifeguards and the kids at the barracks? So I'd like to know what that is, and is it a flat rate? Does it vary where you live? I mean, how do you guys figure that all out? Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. All right, all right, we're going to move on. Approval of minutes, warrants, ending contracts.
I move approval of all four.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those are approved. Department requests, we have Nantucket Preservation Trust.
I'm going to review this for you. Back in June, you heard a, you had a preliminary review of an historic preservation restriction for the property located at 10 Sherburne Turnpike. The preservation restriction has been reviewed by Town Council as well as the Massachusetts Historical Commission. The only change since June is that the holder of the restriction is going to be the Wisconsin Trust instead of the Nantucket Preservation Trust, but everything else is in order, and I would recommend approval and find that the HPR is in the public interest.
Okay, great. We've reviewed this before. Do we have a motion?
So moved, as Erica stated.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Okay, we have an annual report, Nantucket Community Television.
From out of the booth.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the Select Board, Manager Gibson and Administrator Mooney. Thank you to my colleague Frank Shat had a production for punching buttons for me during this report. It's a pleasure to be with you, of course. We're a little delayed. Last time I gave this report was two and a half years ago, actually, so we're a little behind, but I'm glad everything worked out with our additional meeting services contract. I was going to say, Erica, I actually have my report queued up right here on my screen. Yeah. Thank you. Let me pull that up real quick. And share that. And since we're TV people, let's see if we can start with the video, and let's pray this plays correctly. And no audio, awesome. Maybe, maybe you should, maybe you should do it after all, Erica, sorry. So it's actually the link on the very last slide, yeah. It's not playing? Shoot. Okay, oh, well. We can just do this the old-fashioned way, and I'll send you the link after the fact. And if you've watched any of our broadcasts of any, you can try, all right. It takes a village, as they say. Well, while we're waiting for Frank to, I'll pull that up. Oh, looks like he has it just coming up. Awesome. We're going to drag that over. Okay, now we're back. Glad we got that working. Thanks to Frank Shat for saving me there. Looks like we get our screen share working once again. Let me make that full screen, and you can just turn that off, Frank, and I've got it from here. Yep, there we go. So NCTV, obviously, we're a couple of cable channels, absolutely, but we're a lot more than that. We're the Island's Media Arts Center. We do a whole boatload of educational programs, serving everyone from wee ones to senior citizens. I'm actually the one who teaches the iPhone Essentials for Seniors class. We just had one of those the other week over at the Salt Marsh. And we're an award-winning center. We've got a great team. I know we have large turnover in organizations as well as the town on our island, so even though I've only been here three and a third years, I'm the second senior most full-time person on our staff, but we have a great and growing staff of really talented people who are bringing their best, their A-game, to the effort every day. We also have a local Board of Directors. Malcolm, of course, is one of those. Florenzi is another, and a lot of other great folks from the business community, from the school, and from the nonprofit sector here in our island. We touching on some awards here from the 2024 report. It's hard to believe, but in the 2023 report, I believe I counted 17 awards that we won in 2023 alone, and then, of course, these four awards in 2024. When we get to our 2025 presentation, we've got a few more to point out, but of course, some of these awards, including the Journal of the Journey of the Nantucket Vocational Scholars, the great work the Golf Club Foundation does with our local high school students who are pursuing their post-secondary efforts, and Nantucket Life on the Isle, talking about local theater and promoting local arts and culture, and of course, Hungry Dinosaur, that was an example of our education program, working to create live children's theater here in our community. When I mentioned the two channels, of course, last time I was here, two and a half years ago, we only had Channel 18. Then we get our channel numbers moved on us, kind of against our will. Comcast wasn't picking on us. That happened to stations across the Commonwealth and beyond. But as you might recall, right before the deadline of our annual town meeting in fall of 2023, we got our HD channel turned on, so now we have both channels. Civic is how we branded our Channel 8. That's what we're live on right now, of course. And then Channel 1072, it's all about Nantucket life, Nantucket arts, Nantucket culture, and sports, sports, and more sports. All our live sporting events are carried in HD on 1072. We're in our second year of our New Moon Festival that's celebrating women filmmakers from around the world. A great event we have every Memorial Day weekend at the Wisconsin Casino. Our head of programming, Steph Sarah, is on the call and can chime in with any questions about that. And yeah, the Shorts Festival, some of you were at the Shorts Festival just this last weekend, but it was 11th annual as of the authoring of this report. We just had our 12th annual last weekend. It sells out every year, and it's all Nantucket filmmakers making films on by and for Nantucket viewers. And as a matter of fact, it's going to be available online starting this weekend, so stay tuned to your local media outlets of choice, and we'll be letting folks who missed going to the festival in person, we are going to give them an opportunity to see those local films as well. Sports, obviously, is a passion of mine, along with serving all of you and the government, so this is kind of my, you know, geeking out on the numbers page, but suffice it to say, we have the finest sports broadcasting operation on the Cape and Islands, at least, and one of the best in the state. We are really showing our stuff. Obviously, we had our Fenway Park live broadcast. That was a really special event and probably the most viewed sporting event we've ever had on an Nantucket team out to the wider world. And then our government coverage, for better or worse, folks are very interested in what y'all are up to and what's going on at town meeting. HTC gets hundreds of viewers for every meeting. Read into that what you will, but we are happy to support all 10 of our regulatory committees here in Nantucket and do whatever we can to enhance the quality of their broadcast. As far as plans for the future, our goals, certainly, we have a brand-new set of HD, or actually 4K cameras. The cameras in this facility have been in continuous operation for over a decade and are starting to show their age, so we are looking to replace all of the cameras in this facility this winter in order to further upgrade the broadcast quality, not just of Select Board, but of all the meetings that we quote-unquote "live switch" or provide live multi-camera operation with lower therographics about agenda items, tagging folks' names, and so forth. So I was asked to make it quick, since you have a very lengthy agenda tonight, but if there are any questions, I'm here, and again, our Director of Programming, Steph Sarah, is online. Frank Shat, our Director of Production, is in the back as well, if you have any concerns or anything you'd like to bring to our attention.
Do you have any questions, comments?
I just, I'm amazed. I'm always amazed every year, and I had the pleasure of having that seat for a year or two on the NCTV board, and it's just, it's so much fun to go to those meetings and hear the creative ideas, you know, the reinvention of the new moon. I've been now several times. It's amazing, and I went to Shorts this year. It was really fun. So thanks to you guys. You put in a lot of hard work and represent the community really well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for saying that. We do appreciate it.
And I did overhear at the Shorts Fest, there was a question about our streaming bill. Since the Select Board did sign on to endorse that, we want to thank you again for that. The latest news I've heard as of last week, that the House Committee has extended a reporting deadline out to Friday, November 14th. We are awaiting on the Senate side, a meeting of the Ways and Means Committee. They haven't met since the bill was reported out from the Advanced IT Joint Committee to them. They have a slightly different version of the bill, but accomplishes much the same effect, so we're waiting with bated breath for Senate Ways and Means to take up this legislation, so as soon as we know more, we will be glad to let you all know more.
And just to clarify for the community who may not know, this is about extending the fee that comes to our local cable channel, NCTV. You see it on, if you're doing Comcast cable TV, you get a fee, and the station is funded that way, but as more people cut the cord, as I just did this weekend, the streaming services, we're not charged to the streaming services, so that this bill is to extend that fee to make sure that the funding stream doesn't shrink as more and more people find alternative access to television content. Did I get that right?
Couldn't have said it better.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other questions?
Charles, I just want to say that I was at the Shorts Festival. Brooke was there, since she was in a movie, and it was terrific. It was one of those community events where you run into people you haven't seen in a while, and everyone had a great time and laughed and maybe shed some tears at some of them, so you guys did an awesome job, and that's the kind of more, the events that we want to have more of on the island, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and I want to thank especially the morning after. Over 26 people showed up upstairs of the Dreamland, that Sunday morning.
For the filmmaking class.
For the filmmaking class, and guess who taught that? Maisy Cocker and John Carl McGrady, two Whalers class of 2021, who were co-editors of the Veritas Student Newspaper back when they were in school. Now here they are, working for us, and over a dozen people from that class, allegedly, are going to work on their own shorts movie for the Shorts Festival for 2026.
That's great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good report. Okay? The next, we are on to, let's see, Baxter Road. Is that Vince?
So I'll give a bit of an intro, and by the way, thank you, Charles, very much. Charles is always extremely helpful in all of our meetings and other events, and Frank, too. So the next item, update on Baxter Road Alternative Access Notice of Intent. The Notice of Intent Submittal to the Conservation Commission was the kind of the culmination of several years' worth of work to get to a design that will require Conservation Commission approval for alternative access to Baxter Road. The board has had several updates on this project, and Vince is going to take us through the most recent ConCom action on this and some options as a result of that action.
Thank you. You guys able to hear me okay? My traditional sound problem, isn't it thing? Okay, so I want to just walk through where things stand, what position we're in, and then possible next steps, just like Libby said. Thank you, Erica. So on August 26th, we submitted the Baxter Road Alternative Access and Utility Relocation to the Conservation Commission and to Mass DEP, Mass Department of Environmental Protection. Standard submission had almost everything we needed, and we had a plan for the, for a few properties where we didn't have permissions to submit. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? So I just want to give you an overview of what the project was and some of the risks that were in place. The heavy black lines that you can see wiggling through this map are the existing parts of Sankey Road, together with where new sewer and water lines would go. And as you go between Sankey Road and Baxter Road, this is where the new access water and sewer would go to give access water and sewer to the people on Baxter Road who would need it in the event of a breach. I just want to draw your attention to the fact that there's two lines on this. The blue line is the current coastal boundary, and the red line is the 100-meter jurisdiction inland, that is the coast, that is the area that the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over, and the black hatched area between those lines is Baxter Road, showing how at risk some parts of Baxter Road are, so that even if we had to do a demolition on Baxter Road, as would be part of this plan, that would all need a permit. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? This is an old map. It's the advantage to this one is that it's got lots of nice, quite bright colors on it, so it's more easily understandable. You can see Baxter Road to the north, you can see Sankey Road to the south, you can see the purple going in between them, that would be tarred surfaces potentially. The brown trackways would be untired, you know, dirt tracks effectively, and you can see a couple of green lines in there, which would be hedging to give screening for neighbors that we negotiated to give the neighbors the protections that they wanted. So there's two green lines, the one that's furthest to the south, the next one over that one, thank you, Erica, that leads up to 90 Baxter Road, so everything from there to the left-hand side up to the north is everything that would get services and protection. The two red stars are the two potential breach sites, so that we would be able to give access water and sewer to everybody north of 90 Baxter Road in the event of one or both of those locations breached at the north or south end of the current existing geotubes. This is an old map. There's incorrect parts in it because it's from an older design, from almost from over two years ago. It's just nice for illustrative purposes because it has the pretty colors. It has changed quite significantly since then, but the basic layout remained much the same. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? So the NOI was submitted. We didn't have some neighbor signatures, but it was going to go through permitting to understand what properties we would need to take. And as you go through the permitting process, the design that we have gets changed by permitting agencies, gets altered. They can move things, so we don't, we didn't know what we'd be able to take, and if we took the wrong footprint because of our design, then we wouldn't know what we would need for later. We could make a mistake earlier on, so we chose to move ahead with the design and submit it to the conservation agents so that we could understand the correct takings that we would need to do later. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? Oh, and just to say that any takings would be as a last resort. We would still very much like to negotiate with neighbors. There's also a slight error on this map. The one little very yellow square to the very north on the left of this map should now be green. We've received permission from that property owner, and we got a response recently, and thanks to them. But this shows the footprint of the construction corridor in green and with brown, where we'd need some additional permissions from property owners. So there's a construction corridor which would get built, and then at the end of it, we would just be left with the existing road corridor. We would do any fixes to the roadsides and reinstatements of vegetation as needed post-construction. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? As you can see, there's three properties here where we need a permission, where permission slips were not returned, and there are small little brown pieces in this, as you can indicate, as seen here, but I'm going to zoom in in a second, so there's more detail on the way. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? One of them sent in a written opposition to the Conservation Commission just before the hearing, about the day before, and together with other feedback from another group, this led to the unexpected rejection of the application. When we got to the ConCom hearing, they wouldn't even open it on September 18th. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? So just zoomed in here, I just want to walk you through what some of the issues are. There's a lot of colored lines here. Green and brown areas are areas where the road's water and sewer would go. The blue is where there's an existing wetland, and the green is where there's an existing vegetated area, wetland hydro soils, and the purple line at the very top is the coastal bank. There's a 100-foot buffer that goes back, and there's an overlap in them in this area, so the one that's parallel to the purple line, that's 100 feet back from the coastal bank, just goes, follows on Baxter Road, and the one that kind of bubbles around 92 and 90 Baxter Road, that's 100 feet back from both of those. So the three properties here, 196 and 92, we never received property owner permission. So the one at 100 is outside of the two setback areas, the 100-foot areas, that we do need to have a resolution for what to do for 92 and 96. They are within the 100-foot buffer zones where we would have to have a path forward for the Conservation Commission. So one of the ideas might be a request for determination of impacts, and this is another type of application we can do to the Conservation Commission. Can I please have the next slide, Erica? So what I'm proposing, and this is what I'd like you to consider and potentially give a vote or some path forward on, this is my suggestion. Pardon me, I'll rephrase that. This is the suggestion that a group of us worked on together, not just me alone. We work as a team or as a village, as you just heard. Application one. Get the existing NOI, as we've just seen. Look at the town parcels only. That's Baxter Road, Sankey Road, Bayberry Lane, and the bike path on Sankey Road as well. That will form one. That is all essentially town-owned, and that can be one application, and we would only need essentially one signature from the town manager. And it covers the vast majority of the works area. Application two. This is a separate secondary application that the town would have to undertake. This is on private properties only, and I do not want to do a notice of intent for this. Instead, I want to do a request. Instead, I want to do a request for determinations. The way that requests for determinations work is very different. There's no property owner signatures required. They must only, we must only notify them, the town must send a notification, and/or our agents, such as Arcadis, who are partners on this project, must send out the notification to the property owners that this has been submitted for their property. This would allow the project to then continue and allow for time to work with the neighbors to understand what the issues and takings might be in the future. I must also say that this, that we tried the nicely-nice approach, that got rejected. This is the next phase on where we're being a little bit more forward, all entirely allowable under the Wetland Protection Act and the next possible step. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? So other things to consider. We want to keep this project moving forward, and I've presented a two-part application strategy that would allow this to work. And as we saw, many of the application areas are 75 feet or more back from the area. There's other structures in the way. This might then show that the request for determination might simply show that there is no impact, and we can allow this to proceed. We must also consider what we must do with our, for all of the project areas. We must understand where we stand with SBPF and have a, consider a potential review or an update at this point. It was in March 2022 that that was agreed. It's a couple, several years later, three and a half years later. That could do with a strategic update to increase the benefits to the town. SBPF have been talking about wanting to engage on the MOU, sorry, on the Alternative Access Project. There is a way that they can engage that's beneficial to the town, and this could be written into the MOU potentially. We could require SBPF to seek all permissions and easements from the neighbors, from the, for the alternative access, and we could make this contingent on the construction for, say, a license for the geotubes. We can tie those together so that we all get something that would benefit everyone. This is a logical response to get multi-group as partners involvement, so that we can have SBPF working with the neighbors to get the agreements that the town was having trouble getting, or find another path forward. So they would then be directly working with the neighborhood group. I have been working on it for three and a half years. I have very high-level support from all but a small number. So I have more than 80% buy-in, but I didn't manage to get it all, but that's very hard on these kind of projects. The other thing that we can continue to do with SBPF as partners is we can continue with the appeals process that is ongoing with the geotubes. The Geotube project is still a very viable project, but it's under appeals, has been for quite some time. It's sitting between MEPA, Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act, it's a review agency, and Mass DEP, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections. The MEPA, I'm expecting to render a decision as early as, the common period currently closes on November 12th, and I'm expecting a decision then November 21st. So that's going to continue, and we'll have to see what their decision is to see what the next stages are. If it's clear and easy, then we can just expect a decision from Mass DEP sometime in February. That then leads into how we might approach the licensing for this, for this May annual town meeting. Can I have the next slide, please, Erica? So other elements in the project that are still in development, you can pick any part of the wheel that you can choose. Let's start with, we still are working on permitting for the Alternative Access Project. We're still trying to understand the triggers for what will drive it. We understand the existing ones of 25 feet from the edge of the road to the edge of the bluff, that still remains in place, but are there other triggers that we could also look at and consider? It's well documented that the construction for the Alternative Access is going to cost $24.1 million, and that would have to go to town meeting. And then we go through the construction process, and once all constructed, at the very end of the construction process, which would take about two years, then we could start to undertake betterment to recoup much of the $24.1 million. We've currently gone through the appraisals on 20, more than 22 properties, mostly homes and parcels, to understand what the various taking costs might be for both the construction corridor and then the permanent takings. I've already covered the rest for betterments. Thank you. Next slide, Erica. So I hope to ask the board to give some consideration to the two-part plan for an NOI for the road corridors and a request for determination on private properties, and hopefully that can provide the next step to keep this project moving forward.
All right, can I, does anyone have any questions about the applications, applications?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
All right.
I was just wondering which you prefer, Vince?
I preferred the approach we already tried that failed. I prefer to keep trying to work with neighbors. Regrettably, that didn't work. There are some people who do not wish to have this project on their property, and that is their right to try and fight this. We can go through the takings process, but we're upping the game by splitting it in two, and so that is what I would really like to focus on next. We've tried the softly-so softly approach. This is showing that we have serious intent.
So that's application two.
Undertaking both together.
We would take both. My question, would they be concurrent? Would they be heard at the same time and go at the same time?
I would hope so, yes.
All right, so that would be the intent. And then you talked about MEPA, and you're saying if MEPA goes smoothly, we'll know on November 22nd or sometime. But if it, what is it, what does it mean if it doesn't go slowly? Like, are you worried that there's, that things could happen there, and it could be, could they say no, or could they delay it? What do you think is, what are the options?
So MEPA have a number of options, and I don't have a crystal ball match. I don't know how they're going to decide it. They've asked a lot of very intuitive questions, and a lot of very clever questions, and a lot of very probing questions. The team that works with SBPF Epsilon have been outstanding. There is no better term for it than that. They have provided everything, and we have the indications that it might go smoothly, but I can't predict a road bump.
Okay. Because I'm, just because I'm thinking that may impact some of the other considerations you have below.
Yes.
And so in some ways, I think we, I look and think we, we should understand what happens there. In some ways, I agree with, you know, putting in applications one and two, but I also think we need to hear what MEPA says.
I can maybe assist you with that if it helps. So the MEPA review is for the Geotube project. The Geotube project, for better or for worse, is an interim project, would buy a few decades, no matter what, whether it's now, if the Geotube project fails, or at some point in the future, we are going to need the Alternative Access Project. So they're still independent. I know there's links between the two projects, but if we go for the two-track project, the two applications, you know, for NOI and request of determination, that can still remain the independent project that's needed for the Alternative Access, whether we need it now or later.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, this, this has been challenging. Thank you, Vince, for your persistence, and I know, I imagine that you have tried very hard, and that some folks are just, you know, struggling with this and the impact on their property and aren't ready to say yes. So I think we have to keep moving it forward. It's critical. We have to get it to a place where we can ask the voters, you know, are we going to do this or not? But all of this is required before we can get there. And the two things, that's what I was going to clarify, the two things are separate, right? The appeal of the Geotube NOI and the, and this Alternative Access, but they have to keep moving in parallel.
Yes, there's a lot of commonality, but the two are entirely independent. There are common actors between both. The town and SBPF are partnered on the Geotube project. SBPF want to engage on the Alternative Access Project, and we have found a role for them where they can now work with the neighbors. And I would like some, hopefully some assistance and some feedback from the, from the board as to getting SBPF involved in that, and having that be something that could also encourage and help them towards licensing.
Yes, so it feels like that makes the relationship between the town and SBPF more aligned, as it were, in terms of getting what we need out there from the town's perspective, is what I'm hearing from you, so.
Yes, so, you know, if we said you get all of the, these might seem like strong statements, but if we get them to get all of the permissions that the town needs, then we can assist them with their license. Was there a point in putting up the license unless we, for the geotubes, unless we have the permission for the Alternative Access? It would be good to keep both moving forward together.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, I look at it, I don't, we wouldn't want to be held up later with either not being able to put the road in if it's needed, or, you know, or having people vote down the road at a town meeting because it's absolutely necessary. So we didn't, you know, it's sort of, you know, we don't want to be held up by either, either direction, so, all right. Meredith? Would you like to comment, Meredith?
Oh, good evening. My, I can't tell if I'm on, I don't have the ability to turn my camera on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, board members, and I guess Vice Chair Fee. I'm here tonight to just echo our support to be, to work with the town and to find a mutually agreeable approach that is needed for the road relocation plan. As we said back in August, we know the town had been working really hard, and we commend Vince for his hard work in trying to develop a relocation plan that would be acceptable to all concerned. Indeed, you know, there's been a lot of progress in that effort, but there are still a few elements that have not been worked out. We offer our ability to help in that manner, that is specifically outlined in our original MOU between SBPF and the town back in August. We continue to reinforce that intent for us to engage with the town. After we have sent email and communication in September, we have reached out to some of the key parties to understand the homeowner's view on the situation, and as a result, we are cautiously optimistic that there could be a plan that could work for all involved, and we offer our assistance to encourage the select board to advise staff to first engage us as partners and as a resource, so that we may be able to potentially bring back an NOI application with all in support of a relocation plan, rather than going at a two-different-part approach. We have reviewed, obviously, Vince's slide and listened to his presentation tonight and appreciate his hard work, but we believe we can work with SBPF and the town homeowners to come up with a adjustments or potentially revised NOI that can be resubmitted as an alternative option. In addition to that, we have reviewed the other considerations that were outlined tonight and believe that we would ask to reengage with the working group that had been identifying specific issues for the license agreement, and be able to continue to pursue that and to better understand some of the issues associated with the cost sharing. The idea of a betterment system has been mentioned briefly, but we have not discussed it in any meaningful way or any specific details, and therefore we ask for, you know, transparency and an open dialogue to allow SBPF to work with the homeowners and to make sure everyone understands all of the issues moving forward. To that, and again, we look forward to hopefully re-engaging in the working group, to work collaboratively with the town, to continue our efforts as we move forward to town meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Brooke, do you have a question?
I don't have any questions. I just, I just want to make a comment, and I think the question about betterments, right, is always the balance of individual property owner interests versus community at large interest. But there's another, there's another factor at play here for the homeowners in Wisconsin is, is the willingness of the taxpayers to vote large capital projects, and that, I mean, I don't see this getting through town meeting without a betterment's plan, and I want to lay that out right now, so that everybody out in Wisconsin understands that that is our intention, is to balance the cost to the broader tax base of the community versus the individual property owners who will benefit from this project. And so I just, I, I want it on the record now, so that nobody's surprised, or seemingly seems surprised that betterments are on the table. I've known betterments are on the table for a very long time, so if somebody didn't hear that, I just want to articulate it loudly and strongly right now, and I hope, Vince, I haven't stepped on any toes by saying that.
And Mr. Chair, I would like to second that, because without that, we could spend all our money for the next few years fixing roads around the whole island. This is not, this is just not Wisconsin.
Vince?
So betterment must be part of the whole process.
Yep, absolutely, and both Brooke and Malcolm are exactly correct, but there's one more thing to bear in mind about betterments. SBPF wanted to have a hand in negotiating part of the betterments, and we have to work on that, but we must also remember that the betterments are the preserve of the select board and then ultimately town meeting. If we can't present something to town meeting that shows the best possible return for the taxpayer, and if we end up having to get negotiated down, that could be a detriment at town meeting also.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Do we need a motion, or?
Would you like a motion for this?
For the two-part application, it was this slide, beg your pardon, Erica. If you want, if someone wants to word a motion for application one and application two for an NOI for road corridors, and a separate request of determination for private properties.
And that's on page 98?
Yeah, so I'll make that motion, that the select board endorses that plan.
Have a second?
I'll second that, man, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, all right, thank you, Vince.
Mr. Chair, next we have Transportation Projects Update, and we have our DPW director here, I think the Transportation Projects Coordinator, Mike Burns, may be online. And this is something we try to do with the board annually, and Drew's got a presentation for you.
Great, thank you, Libby. Yeah, as you mentioned, Mike Burns, Transportation Program Manager, is online. We typically try to do kind of an annual update on all things transportation, so we'll try to get through this as quickly as we can. We're going to highlight essentially 10 different projects that are active. These are all active, funded projects in various stages. Some are just a dream, some of them we're building today. So we'll start with our annual Roadworks program. Interestingly enough, it's very timely because the annual Roadworks contract was on pending contracts this, this evening. We'll start with paving, so, you know, our goal for this fiscal year is to tackle some of our arterial roadways. Nobodyer Farm, from the Field Complex to Milestone Road is kind of first and foremost on our priority list. It certainly needs some TLC. Recently, a sewer extension from Sun Island up to the Athletic Complex, the sewer extension for the Airport Housing Project ended up repaving full width that stretch, so we'd like to take it from there up to Milestone Road. So I wanted to put it out there that we're hoping that actually happens next week. I'm still working on finalizing the schedule. You know, it's, all of these roads, there's plenty of them on Nantucket, that are kind of difficult to do this type of work, especially if it's full-depth reconstruction. It's a long way around if you're on Nobodyer Farm to get out, you know, east on, on Milestone, but we have to be able to do these things from time to time. Additionally, Pulpice Road from Milestone out to the Life Saving Museum, that asphalt, a lot of it's relatively new-ish in the last couple of years, so we'd like to extend further east, starting with an area near the Life Saving Museum. There was an issue with the culvert that we've repaired, so we'd like to pave that stretch that was skipped previously, and then continue further east. I did want to highlight the third section down for Pulpice Road from 100 Sankey, which is the golf course, heading out towards Sackage upon about a mile, mile and a half. We are looking to do a cold-in-place recycling pilot paving, and I'll get into that a little bit more detail on the next slide. And then Cliff Road, same thing, recently, last couple of years, was repaved from Maticet in toward, into Crooked Lane, so we'd like to continue that in towards, towards downtown. We obviously have a lot of road work going on right now, some of that we'll get into later as transportation-related projects, but sewer extension project is well, the final restoration is well underway, and that's taking up a lot of Victor Brandon's capacity this time of year. Erica, you can go to the next slide. So this cold-in-place recycling, or similarly, if, if the road's degraded enough, paved place stabilized, full-depth reclamation is something that we are evaluating, as far as its efficacy and appropriateness for Nantucket. It's, it's very cost-effective, traditionally about 50% of the cost of mill and overlay. It's, it's very cost-effective, traditionally about 50% of the cost of mill and overlay. It recycles all of the existing aggregates in the road, adds a binder product or a Portland cement, really more so for roads that the degradation extends deeper and kind of beyond the, the wearing course, the surface of the pavement. It's environmentally friendly, it's, I think it reduces 90% of the greenhouse gas emissions that are generated when you, when you produce asphalt and pave. So there's a really great sustainable element to this approach. It's also quicker because the same day that that gets milled up, it really kind of gets put back down right behind it. It's, it's one long train moving down the road, and so going back to what I was saying, if, if this was applicable on Old South Road or, or some of those tougher roads to shut down for extended periods, I think it could be a really good application. So the photos on the right, we took some cores out on Pulpus last week with Victor Brandon and Indus. That method is, it's pretty interesting, they, for a stretch of roadway, say about a mile long, you'd collect cores, the one on the, you can see what one core looks like on the right, collect about 350 pounds of cores, ship it to a lab in Minnesota where they analyze the aggregates, the, the liquid asphalt binder, the contents of what is existing, and then they come up with a mixed design for that specific road. So we also did some sampling on Old South Road and for comparison purposes on, on Monahansa, where, again, we'll get into it, obviously, it's, it's part of a different roadway project that is underway, but we wanted to be able to compare kind of existing conditions of some of our roads to others to understand where it may be appropriate and, and how it works. So that could be, it's very exciting, that could be something we, we look at going forward. It reduces the dependence on barging aggregates over to Nantucket, so that's, that's also just a, a nice little benefit.
Can I have a question about it? Well, is it, will you do the, do you do the whole road from side to side when you go down and do it? It's in one?
Yep.
One swipe?
Yep. Yeah, typically you do both edges of the road and then finish with, with the middle, and typically there's some overlap with the, the width of the paver.
And so you'll have to go down and cut the edges and get the sand away and everything and make sure that it's wide enough and?
Yep.
And then you go along the whole, and then is it, so it'll be consistent thickness if you do this, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's a way to take a lot of the kind of anomalies and inconsistencies out of the, of the roadway, so, and that's why a lot of, or so many of the cores need to be taken ahead of time and analyzed pretty, pretty in-depth, so.
And how, how, so one more question, how, how strong is it? How, you know, it, once it's done, is this stronger than doing, you know, a top coat and another coat, et cetera, is this?
Yeah.
Because it's all one piece?
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's a really, really robust finished product. Again, like if, if the top inch of pavement is cracking, milling overlay probably is still, it really is still the, the best approach. This is for when the degradation of the roadway starts to extend into the middle and like the binder and base course, the, the lower levels of, of the, the total cross-section, so that's six inches of asphalt you're seeing there, so, you know, if it's, if it's too thin, this may not be applicable, there's not enough good material to use and recycle in place, and so that's why we did cores in various places to start to understand how we could use this out here. You know, the benefit too is it's done by a company that's off-island, so if Victor is milling an overlaying a road somewhere else or tied up with a different project, this is a contractor we could bring out to help kind of accelerate our ability to resurface our roads. Capacity is always something we, we struggle with, you know, we have kind of short spring and fall seasons, a number of capital projects, and then you get a nor'easter and now all of a sudden you're a week or two behind, and, you know, this could, again, be a tool that we use to, to just get more done in a, in a calendar year.
How does it compare cost-wise?
It's about 50% of the cost, which is, which is also great.
Wow, so cheaper, right.
You know, again, depending on the, the mixed design, you may do the cold-in-place recycling and then still have to do a, a thin top course, the wearing course, but again, it allows you to, to just spread your, the dollars go a lot further. Go to the next slide. So obviously, always working on improving our sidewalks. On our list for this fiscal year is Gay Street, North Water Street, which we started in the spring, have continued to work on this fall from Broad to Step Lane and C Street. We'd like to do a stretch on Main Street from Federal to North Union on the north side of the road, East Chestnut in concert with the cobblestone improvements that we've been looking at doing in that area, and then extending Center Street from Step Lane to Broad. So the sewer project we did, curbing and sidewalk east, or, I'm sorry, north of Step Lane, and we did a lot of curbing and sidewalk replacements on Center Street, both sides, from Main Street all the way to Broad, so this is kind of the, the gap in the middle there. On the bottom left, you can see our GIS database of all our sidewalks, and that was based on the last condition assessment, it hasn't been updated, but I'm actually really proud to, you know, kind of highlight the, the core and a lot of the red areas that you can see there, so again, Center Street on the Main Street end, Center Street on the Broad Street end, both sides of Federal Street, a lot of the areas that are shown and read on that screen, screen grab are, are brand-new in the last 12 to 18 months. And then photo on the right is along the Whaler Museum on North Water Street, so, next slide, Erica. Additionally, cobblestone improvements are always part of our plan. You know, cobblestones and sidewalks are very time-consuming efforts, so again, East Chestnut, Oak Street have kind of been on our list for a couple of years. We have done a lot of cobblestone replacement on North Water adjacent to the, you know, recent work for the sewer project, Easy Street, for example, which is always tough doing the reverse trucking route, and then we definitely have a, a number of various spot repairs on Main Street and Cobblestone Hill. You know, Main Street, obviously, a, kind of a tough spot to, to get that type of work done, and because of everything that we have going on, we typically focus on the sidewalks and cobblestone early in the spring, late in the fall, either when the asphalt plan is not fully operational, or, you know, when the weather's getting a little too cold to, to do paving. So you, we'll probably see an uptick in, in those types of activities as we head into the end of this calendar year. Go to the next slide. And then shared-use paths, wanted to highlight that we, with Environmental Partners Group, recently completed condition assessments of all 35 miles of our bike, existing bike paths. We mapped literally like every crack, every, every defect, and so we're working on putting a bid package out for a project that would include crack sealing and mastic. Mastic's kind of just a, a more robust crack sealing method. Fog sealing, which I've highlighted for this board before, it's a rejuvenator that extends the pavement life, and then of course, spot repairs to address tree roots and other defects like settlement and other things. So that was kind of a big effort to, to catalog and map all of those, but we have a, a really good understanding of the condition of our bike paths now, and we'd like to put that, that out to bid and, and see some repair and maintenance done in the near future. Go to the next slide. And then I just wanted to highlight a couple other DPW initiatives, things that really work in, in conjunction with, you know, paving and the curbing and sidewalks and, and our bike paths, but really just overall improve and maintain our public roads and our rights of way. So, you know, for example, road shoulder restoration is something that, that we do regularly, you know, we've, we've been able to address some issues on Maticet Road, on the shoulder of Main Street and in Skanset, Sankey Road and some other areas. And the photo on the right, I think, is a good example of an area where the pavement is, is an issue essentially because of the, the, the elevation and condition of the road shoulder. So what's happening on, on that, in that location on Pulpus is, you know, vehicles are driving on the fog line on the edge of the pavement, but water's being trapped in the road, so it's getting under the pavement and it's breaking apart, so the, you know, in this area, for example, we would regrade the shoulder, kind of cut it down and allow for country drainage where the, there's no catch basins in this area, there's no drainage infrastructure, so we'd allow water to run off, so we'd regrade essentially from those trees in the photo out to the edge of the road to allow the water to run off, and then, you know, we'd lumen seed. There's some areas where the elevation of the shoulder has dropped because of maybe parking from construction and other things, and so then the edge of the road kind of takes a beating. So we're always working on identifying areas of, of highest priority and, and getting to that stuff. We, we plan to put guardrail replacements out to bid, especially old metal guardrails that have deteriorated and probably don't have the structural integrity that they should, and in most locations, we would be replacing with the steel-backed timber guardrails that, that look really nice and they're, they're really, they last a long time, which is, which is great. And then, you know, we also have been doing a lot of culvert and ditch maintenance, again, kind of going back to that theme of how much the water can, can wreak havoc on our roads. So on, while when it, on Pulpus, on Cliff and on Maticet, you'll notice a lot of areas where we did brush cutting, we cleaned the culverts under the road, we, you know, dug out the ditches and, and cleaned a, a lot of the debris out of there so that the water would flow better. And then, of course, a couple other things, brush cutting just to maintain line of sight, you know, and, and highest level of safety. We put a lot of effort into our gravel road maintenance, we were very fortunate this year because it never rained, but we have a, a ball calling of materials contract to bring sand, gravel and crushed stone out here as needed to help build up our roads, and we have an on-call road grading contract, so I think a really good example of, of how that's served us well is West Maya Comet Road from the golf course all, all the way out to the beach. We brought hundreds of yards of fill material and then got a really good crushed concrete aggregate from Strang, who was also our on-call grading contractor, and just, so it was a material, from a material and hauling standpoint, a joint DPW and private contractor effort to really build that road back up, but when it does rain, it, it lasts a lot longer. We've also done training, road grader training with our staff to help, help them be a little bit better at establishing a crown in the road or super-elevating the road where needed, and thus, again, leads to, to more infrequent maintenance. And then, of course, we don't need to beat the dead horse we talked about last week, but encroachment, enforcement, all of these things come together to, you know, provide safe roads and, and our right-of-ways for, for pedestrians and vehicles. Go to the next slide, Erica.
Oh, hang on, before you move this one, I went on a ride with one of the citizens that has talked to Andrew and myself, Drew and myself, and it was interesting, it was stuff I hadn't thought about, but a lot of it is sand that's piled up, and you see this picture, and you can see that on the right-hand side, the sand is piled up, the water can't leave the road, so then the water gets trapped and then we drive and we smash it, and so all of these, what he's, what Drew's talking about, all of these have to be cut down so the water has a place to go off the road. And some of the worst is at the guardrails where we haven't really been able to sweep or clear, if you, when you drive down sort of Old South Road, take a look at the guardrails and you'll see sand is halfway up the guardrail. It's been piling up for years, and so I think that a lot of what you're doing is sort of long-term, serious maintenance, and so some of the, some of what's really bad is, is that, you know?
Yeah, I think a, a great example of that is, right before you get to the dump on Maticet Road, take a look on your left where we reclaimed, we basically, like to your point, it was maybe a foot or so of material, and actually, the road is a little bit wider now, it's really starting to grow and kind of encroach into the road, so it looks like very, it looks very different. On both, really on both sides of the road, right before you get to the dump on Maticet Road, so I think that's a good example of what we, what we should see, what we're, what we're working on and we should see more often.
And it's going to take years.
Yeah.
On a lot of this, it's not, but it's, it's important.
And it's taken decades for it to get to this point, so if we can make a concerted effort going forward to tackle these things, we should, you know, be able to stand on top of it, is the, is the goal. So just to summarize, you know, there's a lot of things going on constantly, we're spending our off-seasons planning and preparing for these types of efforts. As always, the work needs to be coordinated with other utility, you know, sewer water, National Grid and other capital projects to make sure we're not, you know, putting the cart before the horse when, when it goes to investing, when it comes to investing in, in our roads and sidewalks, and then, of course, our friends in the Commission on Disabilities, we're closely with them to improve accessibility whenever we can. Sometimes it's challenging because of what we're inheriting, you know, in terms of elevations and road widths and, and stuff like, you know, the, the Nantucket quirks, if you will. Next slide. So this project, obviously, I think is probably first and foremost in people's minds, Surfside Area Transportation Enhancements, go to the next slide. Quick summary, I know we've done a couple of pub, public meetings, and this project's been in the works for, I don't know, well over a decade now, but it's improved drainage infrastructure, full reconstruction of the cross-sections and roadway realignments, and 2.4 miles of new bike paths and safety improvements on Lover's Lane, Orkwa and Monahansa. Erica, you can go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, it's a, it's a process to get a project of this magnitude to where it is. So since the last time we presented for this board or, or publicly, in January, we finished the design and recorded the easements that were approved at special town meeting. In March, we advertised the project for bid, April, we opened bids, and in May, we secured supplemental funding at annual town meeting. So once that was successful, in June, we awarded the construction contract, and subsequently what, we applied for a Mass Works infrastructure grant, which I'll get to shortly. And then in August, we held a public, public information session here in this room, and in September, we started construction, which is always very exciting to get to the point where actually, you know, make a mess and, and eventually making these improvements. Of course, I think the question most people always have first and foremost is when are you going to be done? So we expect all of this construction on all three roadways to be complete by summer of 2027. Erica, you can go to the next slide. I just wanted to highlight quickly the project team. It's a big project, there's a lot of people involved, it's a really great team, which I feel very fortunate to be able to say so. From the town, it's myself, Greg Tivnan, Chuck Larson, Mike Burns and Erica Mooney. I didn't have room, but I didn't want to neglect to mention the real estate office, Tracy McDonald and Bob Beistravsky have been very, very helpful, all things real estate and easement related, which is always a complexity that, that can be challenging. So our design engineer of record and also the firm that's doing the construction administration, so overseeing construction through completion is GPI, so Zach, Tim and Travis are the field, I'm sorry, the office staff supporting Roger Hill, who is the resident engineer. He is here on island all day, every day, boots on the ground, he's really kind of the face of the project out on Lover's Lane, Orkwa, Monahansa, I know a lot of the butters have gotten to know him. He's also been to every home Whalers game and he has more merch than me, so he's settling in pretty nicely. Roger's great. And then CC Construction is the general contractor, so Chris Cooney, who's the owner, and then Zach and Kerry, the project managers, and London is their superintendent, also on island all day, every day. So it's a big team, it's a big project, it's going very, as, about as well as can be expected at this stage, and Erica, you can go to the next slide. So wanted to talk quickly about the costs, so the low bidder, when we bid it in the spring, was CC Construction with a contract value of $18.8 million. We typically carry a 10% construction contingency, so that's another $1.8 million. The contract for GPI to oversee the construction is $800,000. We estimate the utility relocations required for the project, it'll be about a half a million dollars. A very conservative estimate for police details for 18 months, officers blocking, you know, directing traffic, blocking the road is, is just shy of a million dollars, and then the easement damages that are due to be paid to a butters for permanent and temporary easements is $38,000 and change. So a total project budget of $23 million, to go back to what I was mentioning about town meeting. The various town meeting articles prior to 2025 appropriated money for the project less the design cost was $15.8 million remaining. We applied to Mass DOT's Chapter 90 program for $3.2 million funding, which was authorized, and then, again, at 2025 ATM, just shy of $6.5 million was re-appropriated from other capital articles, so that totaled $25.5 million. Interestingly enough, where I guess we shouldn't be surprised, the state's, the state's grant programs don't typically align with our annual town meeting schedule or our bidding and construction schedule, especially for a seasonal community. So we had to come up with all that money in May in order to award the construction contract, but I am very proud to say that we applied for that Mass Works infrastructure grant, which has a maximum award of $5 million, and we were awarded $4 million. $4 million is obviously a pretty good chunk of change, but I think what Brian Turbitz is most excited about is that, that's $4 million of borrowing that we don't need to do, and three, three and a half percent over 20 years, that $4 million, it's, it, all, all told, it's saving Nantucket taxpayers a considerable sum of money. So that's really, really exciting to help offset the cost, and we can end up using that money elsewhere. Go to the next slide. So pretty quickly, very generally speaking, where is the contractor working, where are they going to be? So this fall through December, we expect that they'll be on Lover's Lane north of Orkwa. December, January, they'll be working on Lover's Lane from Orkwa down to the Boulevard, and then they'll turn their attention to Monahansa Road. If they have time in the spring, they will start Orkwa Ave, and then in the fall of 2026, they will be focused primarily on Orkwa. Their, their schedule's fairly aggressive, it actually, right now, shows them being done by roughly Christmas of 2026. It's construction, there's always delays and, you know, things that come up and weather and whatever, utilities, so, you know, I'm trying to be realistic, I, I do think we'll have some punch lists and final cleanup, maybe even some final paving in the spring of 2027, but it gives me a, a good level of comfort that everything will be done, including landscaping by summer of 2027. So it's a big project, but they're putting a lot of resources on the job and they're making good progress so far. So on the right, you can see the current status of, of Lover's Lane as we speak. Go to the next slide. And then this is a slide just to kind of walk through what the construction activity phasing and order of operations will be. And then this is a slide just to kind of walk through what the construction activity phasing and order of operations will be. So all the tree clearing and brush clearing and grubbing, project-wide, has essentially been complete. They did about 90%. They have a little bit left by the airport that they need to finish. Contracted, just had to go to another project due to scheduling issues. I said, on the slide, it says we've installed the tree protection. That's actually going to be happening tomorrow. Got delayed because of the nor'easter. And then they did do all of the loam stripping along Lovers Lane on both sides, the organic material and roots. And then through the DCR or the State Forest Bike Path. And just as a reminder, so the bike path from Rugged Road out to Old South Road runs through the State Forest, and and I think that'll be just a really nice feature. From there, they'll basically work their way from the deepest excavation up. So the drainage infrastructure will be installed. They started that today, actually. Both the infiltration system number eight, which is on a private property easement behind number 38 Lovers, and also out in the roadway. So catch basins, manholes, and the storm drains are being installed in the road. Then if utility relocations are necessary, those will occur. And then they'll work on constructing the road and the bike path, so the gravel, subbase, and then doing grading and cuts and fills to exist, from existing grade to finished grade. And then you'll see paving. They'll do driveway, brings concrete curb ramps, and then signage, striping, and landscaping to button things up. And then that's representative of what you'll see on Lovers and what you'll see on Monahansa and Orkwa. As they move around, occasionally you'll have a second crew that might be on another street, but we don't anticipate many situations where we'll have multiple roads closed at the same time. So we're trying to maintain some semblance of accessibility from Old South Road to the Boulevard, either via Lovers or Monahansa, rather than closing everything off at the same time. Because we, you know, I understand Nobodya Farm and Old South Road are already kind of burdened as is. So, next slide. And then lastly, a couple of things I just wanted to touch on is, you know, the traffic calming elements that have been incorporated. There's four raised intersections. So that's Monahansa at Webster, Orkwa at Skyline, Lovers at Orkwa, and Lovers at Rugged. And then there's one median island on Lovers near number 14. We're also adding a new four-way stop at Orkwa and Monahansa. So you know, we've heard at public meetings and from talking to a butters, that's obviously a valid concern. We plan to, you know, obviously continue to evaluate the traffic volumes and speeds, especially after these roads are constructed. Mike Burns, actually, and I joked that it's more fun to start a project because they never really end, because we're always going to be evaluating how people are using the roads. We're making provisions to do additional traffic calming based on the location of drainage structures and stuff like that. It's, I'm not going to get into the details, you know, the 2.4 miles of drainage infrastructure, bike paths. I think everyone knows what the project, it's a big project, but I think it's really going to transform the area and help facilitate effective, safe traffic through this area, which is certainly long overdue. And then lastly, many of the activities are going to require full road closures because of the excavation. And so that's just for the safety of the crew and the public. So we have variable message boards. I think we have five of them around from Fairgrounds and Surfside all the way out to the airport. So pay attention to those. They update them daily based on where the closures are. And we have a project website that's on the bottom. If you go to that page or scan that QR code, so. And feel free to, that was project two of 10. So if you guys have any questions along the way, feel free to interrupt. And then lastly, Newtown Road improvements. You can go to the next slide. Ultimately, just really wanted to give an update on where this project is. So we have, the final engineering design has been completed. The utility relocations, which are on the critical path for executing the project, are partially complete. So we're still looking for that to be finalized. And then we're also working on wrapping up or solidifying the voluntary permanent easements at two properties that are going to be needed. So we've worked with the butters. We just need to put pen to paper on that. And we're hoping to bid that over this winter and start construction in the spring, ideally. You can go to the next slide, Erica. And just a reminder, this is Newtown full length from Hooper Farm to Fairgrounds. It has a pull-off in front of number 16 for the daycare. It's a new shared use path on the north side of the road. New pavement and some drainage infrastructure, granite curbing on the north side, asphalt curbing on the south side. And then, of course, we'll be replacing the existing speed humps, not bumps, speed humps. Next slide. And then the funding for this was $1.2 million originally. Engineering contract, including construction oversight, was $250,000. And then there was a supplemental appropriation in 2024 of $2 million. So very excited to get that project off the ground as well. So we'll have a lot of things going on kind of all at once. Hopefully, this is when this project is able to pick up kind of where the Sewer Force Main Project's surface restoration leaves off this fall. You can go to the next slide, Erica. And with that, I will turn it over to Mike Burns to walk through seven more projects.
Thank you, Drew. And I'll just let the board know. I'll try to be quick with some of these projects. You're very familiar with some of these, but these are some projects that are recently completed using state funds or are soon to be underway, again, using state funds. Next, please. The first is the Milestone Road at Pulpus Road project. This was a a tip project, a Transportation Improvement Program project funded through the region by Mass DOT using federal and state funds. This primarily was a bike project, but it was also realigning an intersection to improve safety, transition from a Y intersection to a T intersection. And the project is now complete. Next slide, please. Here you can see the bike path on both sides of the road in the photo on the left-hand side. That's to connect the Rotary with the Pulpus Road bike path there on the north side of Milestone Road. And then the image on the left, obviously, is the teeing up at the intersection to remove points of conflict and improve safety, which knock on wood, we had really no incidences this summer with this new configuration, where in the past we've always had like one or two crashes. Next, please. Again, the funding was through the region, and we should be proud that the project was only done in a year. The project construction was bid in June of 2024 and completed in June of 2025. So to have a major intersection like that completed in one year, I think is very much an accomplishment, being that it was not scheduled to be completed in one year. It was more like an 18-month or more project. And we do have final walkthrough later this month with Mass DOT. Next, please. I'll go through three milestone road improvements that you all might be curious about. The two projects, two intersection projects that are in preliminary design are the Milestone Rotary to reconstruct that, to add capacity and pedestrian accommodations. The other project was the Milestone at Nobodya Farm Road intersection. That project is experiencing a lot of congestion. I don't think I need to explain too much about that. But that project is, the proposed recommended option is a roundabout to address delays at that intersection. And that's being also overseen by Mass DOT, funded through the state, using federal and state funds. Next, please. Here's a map of the, these project areas, just going from left to right. Again, the Milestone Rotary is under design. We have the Monomoy intersection, and the Pulpus Road intersections are complete now. And on the middle section there, I'll note that the Milestone Road paving is something that's been approved by Mass DOT. But the sequencing of all three projects, we're going to have the Milestone Rotary and then the Nobodya Farm Road intersection on the far right done first, and then fill in the gaps with the improvements to Milestone Road at a future date. And next, please. This slide is a little bit out of date, being that we have new information last week from Mass DOT. There is a public informational meeting to kind of share what the preliminary design is for reconstruction of the intersection, again, to add capacity for vehicle, to process more vehicles through the intersection, but also to better accommodate pedestrians, since this is a safety concern for vulnerable users, vulnerable being bikes and pedestrians. There was a public informational meeting that was anticipated for this month, October. That's likely going to slide into the November months. Next, please. And it'll likely piggyback, or will try to piggyback, meetings with the Nobodya Farm Road intersection to share that preliminary design at a public informational meeting, again, to be scheduled. But then the public will know later this, this fall what those projects will look like, what the alternatives considered were, and how the improvements will benefit the community. Next, please. And lastly, this is again showing the degradation of the edges of the road of Milestone Road. There's a recommendation to add one-foot shoulders on either side of Milestone Lane. Again, that's a future year project. Once the intersections are complete, next, please. And this just summarizes those milestone improvements, noting that there will be more information later this fall. Next, please. Regarding the Sparks Avenue side path, the designer of record is Beta Group, and the board did pick a preferred alternative earlier in the summer to have only a 10-foot path along the south side of Sparks Avenue from essentially the high school driveway to Milestone Lane next to the Milestone Rotary. That design is in progress now. There will be a subsequent design agreement for Beta to be approved by the select board in the next meeting or two to proceed with the final design of that project. And hopefully, that's complete in the short term. Next, please. Just so the public knows, and we can not spend too much time on this, again, is to provide a minimum of a 10-foot wide side path, if possible, on the south side of the road. There are some utility poles that are in the way that kind of constrain the width of the path. But for the most part, it'll be a 10-foot wide path and not the four or five-foot wide sidewalk that all users have to use, bicyclists and pedestrians. Next, please. Again, preliminary engineering is complete, and we hope to have a final scope and design contract in the next meeting or two for the select board to approve. Next, please. Same with the Williams Street and the, excuse me, Pleasant Street and Williams Lane project. Beta Group is also the design consultant for that. The board earlier this year picked a preferred alternative to maintain two-way traffic flow and just have a a sidewalk on one side of the road. Again, the board should have a contract in the coming meetings to approve, to finalize that design. Next, please. And this graphic is just showing preferred concept of the boards to have a sidewalk along the southwest side of Pleasant Street and to preserve the trees that are along that section of Pleasant Street between Gartner Perry Lane and Williams Lane, since that was important for the community and the historic context of the area. Next, please. The project will also include some expanded parking along with the sidewalk improvements. And this is showing some angled parking with the two, maintaining the two-way traffic flow along the lower end of Pleasant Street around the section where the Stop and Shop is between Chins Way and Dave Street. Next, please. And the recommendation for Williams Lane is, again, maintaining a two-way traffic flow along Williams Lane, but providing a sidewalk along the north side of Williams Lane. Next, please. Again, the board will have a contract in the future meetings to approve, to finalize that design work. And the next section is a improvements to a Pleasant Street sidewalk on the north side of Five Corners. So on the going further into town beyond Five Corners, and that work is still in preliminary design and should be implemented in a future year. Next, please. Again, it's in preliminary design phase. The final design and construction has not been established yet, since it's still in preliminary design. Next, please. A fun project, the Tom Nevers Road side path. These improvements, next, please. You know, support the board's goals for mode shift, accessibility, and expansion of public paths. The project will have a bike path on the east side of Tom Nevers Road and then the south side of Tom Nevers Road to get towards the end of the road. But we'll provide a 10-foot bike path with a four-foot buffer. The entire length, final design is underway and permitting is ongoing. Next, please. The project does include a fun boardwalk element over the landbank property that's in the midsection of the, I guess you can see the locust map there on the top right, if that's. But the Land Bank Commission has supported this improvement and is supportive of the project, and we're excited about this fun element of the path. Next, please. I did mention that we are maintaining a 10-foot wide path as approved by the county commissioners, a 10-foot wide path with a minimum four-foot buffer to enhance safety for cyclists and to provide some relief to a butters, so we don't impact budding properties to minimize those impacts. Next, please. Easements are still needed along some sections of the path as it passes utility poles, and that right-of-way process will carry us through the winter and into the spring to finalize those easement acquisitions. Next, please. The idea is to finalize the design and start construction by fall of 2026 and hopefully have a operational path for the summer of 2027. Next, please. The next project in the sequence is the Walwinet roadside path. Some of you living in the area may have noticed the ongoing environmental and cultural surveying that has taken place this past fall. This project's being overseen by the Federal Highway Administration using a federal grant. There is some town funding appropriated for this project, but the project is currently now in preliminary design. We hope later this fall to have some public outreach to share the findings of the environmental and cultural surveying, but that won't be ready until the surveying material has been processed and turned into presentation materials. Next, please. This is an older map, showing the property owners that were affected. I'll note that the Nantucket Conservation Foundation is a major stakeholder in this project. They're a big, huge butter. The environmental surveying and the cultural surveying will help us minimize impacts to those properties. There are wetlands in those areas. We're in the process now of mapping those out and try to align a bike path to balance the safety of the users of that path while minimizing impacts to environmental resources and these budding property owners. Next, please. Again, I mentioned that the preliminary design is still ongoing. I would say it's still fairly early in the design process. Since an alignment has not been picked, that's unlike the other project I talked about, the Tom Nevers Bike Path. And construction for this is anticipated to begin in the fall of 2027 with the hope of having it operational by summer of '28. That's, that's an estimate. And I'm sure I think we're happy to answer any questions. That's the bulk of our presentation. Like I said, happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Do we have any questions from the board? That's a lot. No, I think the Walwinet people, they're going to be very happy to see this is moving along. I think there's a lot of positive projects here.
I'm really excited about Newtown Road.
Yeah.
Myself. That feels like it's been a long time coming, too.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, great. We are on to PFAS program update.
So just to introduce us a little bit, and also thank you very much, Drew and Mike. That was a lot of work and very comprehensive. So the PFAS update, we've been trying to give the board these PFAS updates on a regular basis, and our environmental contamination coordinator and administrator Andrew Shapiro is here with some other staff to provide this update to you.
Yeah, thank you for the introduction. I'm Andrew Shapiro, Environmental Contamination Administrator, here to give the PFAS update. And I'll just start off by saying that PFAS is a serious issue facing, facing our town and facing many residents and many of our town departments. To date, we've spent over $7.6 million over 27 contracts. So there's a lot going on on PFAS. I've boiled it down to 15 slides. So this is going to be a kind of just scratching the surface of any topic. So if there is, are any questions to go in-depth on any other topics, happy to try to answer them at the end of the presentation. But we might have to just do our research and get back to you. So I'll take it away. Erica, next slide, please. So here's, here are the topics we're going to, we're going to talk through. We don't have to read through all of them. I think we can go to the next slide. So first, from a health department, private wells perspective, where are PFAS detected on the island? If you've attended our Board of Health meetings, you've probably seen this map before. It's also been in the newspaper a couple of times. But we update this map regularly and share it at our Board of Health meetings. And I'll, if you are not familiar with it, I'll give you a little bit of an overview of what this is saying. So this is based on Mass DEP's sampling for their island-wide source discovery investigation. To date, they've sampled over 100 properties. And we're also combining data that comes through our health department via tests that we send to the Barnstable County Water Quality Lab. So that includes tests done as part of property transfers per our regulations as well as voluntary tests. And through those efforts, we have had over 300 properties. And through those efforts, we have had over three hundred properties sampled on the island. So. Between those efforts, we have over four hundred properties sampled on the island. And where are PFAS detected? The short answer is that they are widely detected throughout the island. So. What I'm showing on this map in the green circles, those are areas of the island that are within half a mile. Of a detective PFAS over the state standard of twenty parts per trillion. So you can see Matikit, you can see Mid-Island, you can see Pulpus as well. And then in the purple circles, we have areas that are within half a mile of. An imminent hazard detection. So Mass DEP's imminent hazard threshold is ninety parts per trillion. And Mass DEP defines that as a PFAS concentration that poses a significant risk even over a short period of time. So these are serious situations and unfortunately we have quite a few on Nantucket. You know, I, I, we share this map often and I don't want to give the impression that everywhere within these circles has been impacted. We see very often times where PFAS are detected at a very high concentration. And we also see right next to, next door, we will see a low concentration. So Mass DEP's guidance is for everyone to test their well for PFAS at a minimum of every ten years. Mass DEP has a separate recommendation where they recommend that everyone get a PFAS test if you're within one to two miles of a detection of PFAS. Unfortunately, that includes just about the entire island. So. You know, we are trying to get the word out that PFAS are commonly detected on Nantucket. In fact, just a couple of weeks ago, we sent out a PFAS newsletter that, you know, included those two Mass DEP recommendations. The other thing is we don't want to give the impression that outside of these circles, there is no PFAS. That's not the case. Mass DEP's state standard for PFAS, twenty parts per trillion in a well, it's not perfectly health protective. The EPA standards are stricter and there's still other PFAS that are unregulated. So we have detects of PFAS outside of the circles we're showing here. And you know, to be frank, we're finding PFAS in new areas somewhat frequently. So in fact, we have a new imminent hazard detection on Fulling Mill off of Pulpus. We reported it at our Board of Health meeting last month. We're still waiting for Mass DEP to confirm that sample. Mass DEP's policy is when they do get an imminent hazard detection, they confirm it before starting their process of. Mitigating that person's water. So that that's in a nutshell of where PFAS are detected and the short answer is that they are commonly detected. Erica, next slide please. So because PFAS are commonly detected, we are trying to spread the word, encouraging people to follow Mass DEP's guidance and get a well test. And we're finding that the best way to do that is to use a variety of means to catch a, to get a wide catch of people. So I won't read through all of these slides, but we're using various media. And I'll just highlight a couple of our more exciting communication efforts. Down in the bottom right corner, you can see we have two PFAS community meetings coming up. So. We are gonna have two world-renowned PFAS experts on the island in the Public Safety Building in November and December. We'll have Dr. Shader from the Silent Spring Institute to discuss how to reduce your PFAS exposure. And in December, we'll have Dr. James Todd from the Harvard School of Public Health to discuss PFAS health effects. We didn't have the links in time to get them on this slide, but we do have the links included in the Board of Health packet for tomorrow's Board of Health meeting. We'll be doing more outreach on these, but we're really excited about that. It's a good chance to have some of the best experts in the world. Talk to us about PFAS. We can go to the next slide. So here's where we're gonna get into kind of a sample of the various PFAS projects that are ongoing on the island. We know that PFAS exposure doesn't just occur through drinking water. And our Board of Health adopted a PFAS vision and mission statement that includes a commitment to conducting. Community exposure assessments. So first up, we're looking at surface water and foam. And maybe you saw a little bit about our results in the newspaper. I I heard an overview of the results on the radio organically when I was driving around the island. So I'll, you know, give a little bit of an overview on this testing program. So first, why, why even test surface water in the first place? So we know that much of our groundwater on the island actually flows into the ocean. And of course, we know that there are places where the groundwater is impacted on the island. On top of that, Mass DPH, the Department of Public Health, has standards for bathing beaches which are specifically designed to be. Health protective for children swimming or wading in water. The town's not required to do this type of sampling, but we do want to make sure that we. That our beaches meet those standards, especially given that Mass DPH has gone through the work to set those standards. So our health department already does that weekly bacterial sampling during the summer. So we paid, paired our PFAS sampling with those bacteria sampling efforts. So we did two sampling events. The first was in July and we did a second one in August. Overall, we found that our bathing beaches meet Mass DPH's standards for surface water. At Skonset Beach, we did get one high hit of a compound that does not have a screening value. We have retested it twice since then and that compound has not popped up. We're gonna have a community meeting in January. The details are still TBD. And we'll dive into some of the the more details on this sampling program. Now, the thing that caught our attention was we also collected a couple of foam samples at each of these. During each of these sampling events. So, you know, first, why do we sample for foam? There's no health-based standard for it. There's really not much guidance on foam sampling. But basically, we have read in the literature that PFAS have a tendency to concentrate in foam and. Hold on to that idea because it's gonna come into play for the wastewater update that we give in a couple minutes. And I'm sure, you know, if you've walked around the beaches, you've probably seen foam accumulating on the beaches. So for each sampling event in July and August, we identified foam at two beaches. And we collected those foam samples. We put them in a plastic bag and sent them to the lab. And what we found were really high concentrations of PFAS. So we issued a foam advisory essentially recommending that beachgoers avoid contact with the foam. As I mentioned, we've reported these results to our Board of Health. We're gonna be reporting the results of our second sampling round tomorrow at the Board of Health meeting. And that January community event with kind of a overall result summary, we'll, we'll be sharing more details on that soon. Erica, next slide please. Alright, so we are moving on to the landfill. Now, the landfill is what is called a passive receiver of PFAS because. PFAS have basically been used in so many different consumer products over the past seventy years and. Some of them have been phased out, but consumer products do still contain PFAS and the landfill, of course, receives many of those. Products. So we have two investigations ongoing at the landfill. We generally refer to the CDM Smith investigation. As the one focused on off-site migration. And then we're gonna get to the Sanborn Head investigation later. And that's focused on onsite PFAS concentrations in soil. So let's dig into the CDM Smith one first. The first thing to keep in mind for any groundwater investigation is the direction of groundwater flow. So. On the right-hand side at the bottom, that's showing groundwater flow and it's generally flowing from the landfill to. Towards Long Pond. Long Pond is generally believed to be a low point in our groundwater elevation map. So it's a receiving body of groundwater from both the east and the west. And so, so far what we've done is we've collected four rounds of PFAS sampling data and I'll get into the results on the next slide. So first, let's take a look up gradient of the landfill, basically upstream of the landfill. So you can see MW1 kind of the farthest right sampling point. It's green showing that the. Sample met the, it's the GW1 standard. It's essentially the drinking water standard. So. Relatively low concentration of PFAS up gradient of the landfill. Now, if you look down gradient of the landfill, you can see that PFAS are detected exceeding that GW1 standard and even exceeding. A thousand parts per trillion in some cases. So frankly, high, high concentrations. We are also sampling surface water bodies surrounding the landfill. You can see at the toe of the landfill, I think it's SW2. That is a plate, that is a seasonal pool where we've been sampling for PFAS. And we've detected pretty high concentrations of the Massachusetts PFAS 6 there, above a thousand parts per trillion. And if you look at Long Pond, you will see that we have exceeded the GW1 standard of twenty parts per trillion for the PFAS. Six there. So next up, we're planning to submit a report to Mass DEP based on our findings. I don't have all the details on that findings report yet, but hope to be able to at least put that on our website soon and then. Share the results later on. Next up, the Sanborn Head Investigation at the landfill. So. This investigation is a little bit different. The main goal of this is to characterize PFAS concentrations. In two stockpiles of reclaimed soils. These are flagged as SP1 and SP2 on this map. And the reason we're doing that is to determine their potential for reuse and landfill capping applications. You know, another goal of this investigation is to characterize soil samples in the co-composting back pad area. You can see that on kind of the lower right-hand corner of the map. And we're also looking at the eastern slope. And the southern perimeter access road, all places where reclaimed soils have been used for grading and ground stabilization purposes. And then this investigation also does tie into the CDM Smith report a little bit. This, this eventual report will be assessing the PFAS concentration of reclaimed soils to support the PFAS groundwater. And surface water nature and extent evaluation. So just an update on this project, we submitted an application to Mass DEP in March. That application was approved in May and the sampling was also conducted in May. So generally, we have seen that it is very common to see concentrations in soil. Above the S1 GW1 standards. Soil is regulated a little bit differently from water. Mass DEP looks at six different PFAS compounds individually. And so in these green squares, you can see where we've collected samples, in some cases at multiple depths. And we're showing where at least one of those PFAS exceeded that standard. Like I said, it's the S1 GW1 standard. This is the standard that the Massachusetts Contingency Plan uses for soil in high exposure areas. Such as residential or unrestricted use settings that are overlying groundwater that is a potential drinking water resource. So you can see at SP1, SP2, the reclaimed soil stockpiles. Every single sample had, or sampling location had at least one PFAS that exceeded that standard. And then in the back pad area, it was kind of a mixed bag. And on the eastern slope and the access road, again, PFAS were detected above those standards. Alright, next slide please, Erica. We're gonna shift gears a little bit and talk about the wastewater treatment facility. So like the landfill. The wastewater treatment facility is also a passive receiver of PFAS. Again, PFAS used widely in. Consumer products. You can think about washing a raincoat, for example, in your laundry machine and. A little bit of material or PFAS could leach out and end up in the wastewater treatment facility. And why do we care about PFAS in the wastewater treatment facility? Well, the wastewater effluent is discharged underground. And the sludge is also trucked over to the landfill. So it's really important to address PFAS in, in our sewer. So to date, we've completed three years of sampling. We have started a fourth year of sampling. Looking at inflows to the facility to identify where best to target our efforts to ultimately capture and destroy PFAS. And this bar chart is showing the results of that sampling. And we found some pretty interesting results, actually. So we've collected samples at various pump stations around town. We've also looked at landfill leachate and septic halls. And what you'll see in this pie chart is that the majority of the PFAS in the wastewater treatment facility. Is coming from the landfill leachate. It's representing fifty-nine percent of the load into the wastewater treatment facility. The sewer network is representing a smaller portion. I guess it's about forty percent. And then septic halls actually represent a pretty small percentage of the overall load into the wastewater treatment facility. So what do these results tell us? It tells us that landfill leachate is probably a good place to target PFAS destruction. And so that is something that we're thinking about and actually one of the contracts that was up for. Approval at the beginning of this Select Board meeting was related to a pilot planning project for what's called foam fractionation. And we're gonna be looking at the landfill leachate. So if you remember from the surface water sampling effort, PFAS tend to concentrate in foams. And so the idea here is that if you can get the landfill leachate to foam up, you can concentrate the PFAS in that foam. And then you have a much smaller waste stream to treat. You know, treating the entire wastewater influent is really difficult. But if you can concentrate it, it's much more, it's much easier to address. So next steps, we're gonna be looking at also removing PFAS from our dewatering centrate. Which is basically circulating water and ultimately PFAS around the wastewater treatment facility. And like I mentioned before, we're looking at foam fractionation of the landfill leachate to concentrate the PFAS. Next slide please. So we're kind of jumping around from topic to topic. But I'm gonna give an update on the Mass DEP Fairgrounds Investigation. And we had reported the analytical results back to the Select Board. I think it was February. So it's been a while, but. Since then, Mass DEP issued a findings report on that data. So. Just to recap, the purpose of that report was to summarize the subsurface investigation and. The associated activities that were conducted between November twenty twenty-four and January twenty twenty-five. And it focused on identifying the presence and extent of PFAS at the Fairgrounds Campus. Now, next slide please. So here are the groundwater results. You can see right in the middle of the screen that the. State drinking water standard of twenty parts per trillion was exceeded at one of the wells. You can also see relatively high concentrations in kind of the bottom right corner and the bottom. As well as, I guess, the right-hand side of this map. So we have an exceedance of the state standard. We have some relatively high concentrations. And we have other detects and, you know, overall, it's a mix of detects, non-detects and an exceedance of the state standard. And so I'll get into the conclusions of Mass DEP's report. Next slide please. So in addition to groundwater, Mass DEP sampled soil. They sampled soil both at the surface as well as at the water table. And what Mass DEP found was that the soil results showed low evenly distributed PFAS 6 concentrations. With no clear surface source. They ultimately concluded that PFAS detections in soil were lower than in groundwater. And PFOA and PFOS were most notable in the groundwater. We already mentioned that there were some elevated detections. No PFAS were identified in the monitoring wells west and southwest of the investigation area. And Mass DEP actually found different mixes of PFAS in the groundwater versus the soil. So. The non-regulated PFAS. So the non-regulated PFAS compounds like PFHXS and PFBS were found only in groundwater, not soils. I think there's typo there maybe because PFHXS is a regulated compound. PFBS is not, though, under Mass DEP's regulations. Also of note is that the hydrogeologic review showed that there was a minimal gradient, but generally groundwater flow is towards the north, towards Old South Road in this area. So the data suggests localized groundwater impacts rather than widespread contamination. And ultimately, they concluded that the soil does not appear to be a significant ongoing source of groundwater PFAS impacts. So the town has initiated a contract to develop a preliminary conceptual site model as to how this contamination got here, really focusing on Tom's Way, but also looking at the Fairgrounds investigation area. And we're going to be presenting at the Board of Health tomorrow. So we'll have more details to come on this. Uh, next slide, please. All right, so I'm going to give an update on the water, water comet water system. So first, right up front, well 15, the impacted well with PFAS is still offline. This well is manifolded together with wells 12 and 16 in the wires valley. We have been doing monthly sampling of that manifolded sampling point. And all results have been non-detect so far, indicating that wells 12 and 16 remain unimpacted, which is great news. Wells 15 and 16 are ultimately being treated with an ion exchange technology, which is best suited for short chain PFAS treatment. And the ultimate cost of this project is about $4 million. The startup, startup date is currently unknown. My understanding is that the drought conditions have made it difficult to pull any, any wells offline for really any amount of time. So the startup date is pending pump repair, pressure testing, and ultimately chlorination of these wells.
Andrew, next slide, please.
Yeah, before we get to the next one, what does manifolded mean?
Just connected. It's like one sampling point. The pipes are converging.
All right, it's a fancy way of saying they're connected. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, next slide, please. So that's, that's wrapping up my presentation. Just to give the community an update of where we're heading next. We want to look at septic systems, stormwater and soil management. We know that septic, to some extent, is a source of PFAS. It's unclear to what extent it can impact neighboring wells, but we have seen data that suggests that there is PFAS in septic. Stormwater similarly is a way that PFAS could potentially move around the island. We want to continue doing education and outreach, and we want to continue doing community exposure assessments. There's also a couple of regulations, existing regulations that are on my radar. And Erica, if you don't mind pulling up chapters 361 and 371. And Erica, I can't tell if you're sharing it. I don't know if you're sharing it to the room, but I can't see it at the moment.
Yep, it's on my other screen, so just give me one second.
That's no problem. I'm, I'll, I'll get started then. So chapter 361 is our Surface Water and Groundwater Protection Code. And this has some regulations related to land disturbance development and construction. And Erica, if you want to scroll down to 4-C, just a little bit farther. Just a little more. There's B, so let's go to C. Yeah, that's perfect. So these are regulations that pertain to construction exceeding 120 square feet at any site. And it establishes the minimum standards. Basically trying to keep sediment and soil contained on site to the extent possible. And I guess it's paragraph six of this section has some standards that they must meet the best management practices in this Mass DEP guidance. One of the provisions in that guidance is to develop a soil and erosion management plan. So our health department is planning to do increased communication efforts related to these regulations that are really already in place. And Erica, if you want to go to chapter 371, that would be great. And then scroll down just a little bit. Yep, so here we have our provisions for toxic and hazardous substances. So paragraph A here is defining toxic and hazardous materials. And Erica, if you scroll down just a little more to prohibitions and keep going just a little more. Yeah, so in paragraph 6-A, here's where basically toxic and hazardous materials need to be registered with the health department. And this is a pretty broad regulation. I would say it's a broad definition of toxic and hazardous materials and potentially a broad catch of people who are subject to this regulation. This is going to be a longer term goal. I think we need to think about the best way to implement it, but it's something that we're thinking about and hope to have more updates on that soon. And Erica, if you could just return to the last slide, that would be great. And next slide, please. So just a few final notes. Don't forget to subscribe to our PFAS newsletter. It gets rolled into the town manager's report, so if you get that, you might already be getting it. And then stay tuned for more updates on these really exciting community meetings. That's all I've got, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, does the board of the public have any questions? Nope, I don't, I don't see any. Thank you very much. That was very thorough.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on, uh, this is Libby, Preliminary Review of Town Sponsored Warrant Articles for 2026 ATM.
Okay, so this is a very preliminary review of potential town-sponsored warrant articles for the 2026 Annual Town Meeting, which again starts on Monday, May 4th. Fourth. Yeah, Monday, May 4th. So since this item was put into your packets, I have received some additional articles from other departments. So this is not a totally complete list just yet. And again, it's the first list that you're seeing for that town meeting. So I've sectioned this into the categories of articles. So first off, we have the annual articles, receipt of reports, unpaid bills, all the financial articles. And some of those have yet to be obviously completed, but those are the standard articles. And then we have other select board sponsored articles. Zoning by law and general by law amendments. I have a list of zoning bylaws from planning. And it's not even in your packet yet because I got it after this was issued and I just did not have a chance to get it in here. I, I think Leslie might be online, possibly, to answer any questions about it or give a little overview if you all want that for the zoning bylaws. General bylaws. So we know that e-bikes and e-scooters potentially are very much of an issue. And we have had a lot of internal discussion about the potential for some sort of a home rule petition to cut to the chase and give the town the authority to regulate its own, do its own regulations for e-bikes, which aren't, isn't possible without a home rule petition. There are several pending bills at the legislature about e-bike regulations. And so the only, if we did submit a home rule petition and it was approved by town meeting, it's not going to go anywhere at the State House because Nantucket is really no different than any other town dealing with this issue. It might send a message to the State House. We don't see you doing anything about e-bikes quickly enough. So we want to do our own thing here, but it probably wouldn't pass. So it could be just, you know, symbolic, but symbolic does take time. So in your packet is an email from the chief to me, which lays out some items that we have been talking about, ranging from helmet requirements to multi-use path speed limits. And some of this has already been approved at the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. We are waiting on final approval of speed limits from the state legislature. Don't have that yet. Class 3 e-bikes and motorized devices on bike paths. There are some recommendations in your packet on this. And the chief is here, so if you would like her to quickly summarize what we are seeking guidance on, I'm sure that she could do that. Or you can think about it after absorbing this email and we can get at it at a different meeting. But basically, do we want to try to act now with a local prohibition, which would, I think, be the home rule petition? Or do we want to wait for some state legislation to provide clarity and avoid potential conflict? Because there could be a conflict with what we submit versus what is already pending. And there are, there's a list of the pending bills.
If you're hoping for direction, I would say, yes, we should act on it. And I think, I like a lot of the ideas that the chief has put down here. And I think it does send a message. The communities, you know, the seasonal communities is a result of us and others. It's partly a result of us and others sending the same things back year after year. And so I do think it does send a message, so.
Okay.
That's my own take, but.
It is, is going to be a bit of an effort to get a home rule petition written, maybe. Well, I'll, I'll have to find out. But there are other things in the email that I think we'll just proceed with and prepare some amendments to the existing bylaw.
Yeah, I, I think I'd really like to get an update from our legislative delegation on where they see the different proposals standing and the likelihood of passage. We did discuss this at NP and EDC. And I had concerns about the language in the bill that the NP and EDC ended up, I guess, sending a note of endorsement on, only because I wasn't sure it was comprehensive enough. Because it was a draft of a, excuse me, it was a draft of a bill that's several years old and the technology has changed a lot. So I'd really love to invite Senator Sierra and Mocley to come for a legislative update and ask them specifically to do some research on where this issue stands and help maybe give us guidance on whether sending something up makes any sense or whether advocating for something that's already on the floor makes more sense. Because that may be time better spent.
Yeah, I was, I was basically going to say the same thing. I think that maybe it's not a home rule petition, but maybe we have Senator Sierra and Rep. Mocley here and we take the, the list that the chief and the town manager have sort of, have laid out here, ask them what is pending, what is possible, what's not possible, and then maybe submit that as an official letter to our legislative delegation. And then see how, see how it is moving forward on a potential home rule petition. Because I think Libby is exactly right. It's, it's most likely, almost for sure, not going to go anywhere.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. The noise bylaw, proposed changes. So we discussed this over the summer. The information is in your packet from the meeting where you basically agreed to take this up again as the board begins to consider warrant articles. And there were some ideas about changing the times. And I think that what was being proposed was a little bit more than the board was willing to go along with. So at some point, I'll get ready what I think you all talked about. But again, that information is in your packet.
So when we had the last discussion, we had a representative from the business community at the mic saying that some of these times are challenging based on daylight hours. And so I did a little research and came back and emailed Christina. She didn't seem satisfied with what I came up with as an alternative based on time change. And so I would like for us to agenda this in a way and maybe reach out to the Chamber of Commerce or some, so we can get to the business community. And I, I don't want to discount the amount of outreach that Carol Greenberg and her crew did with businesses. But I worry that people get missed and that we're going to end up having a debate on town meeting floor that could be with a little bit input. We could craft something ahead of time that was less controversial. I think overall, cleaning them up makes a lot of sense. I just don't want to, I don't want to do something that, you know, in the dead of winter, limits businesses from operating hours at a time that doesn't make sense and is detrimental to the business community in a way that is relative to the offset of the intrusion of noise at certain hours of the day, if that makes sense.
Sort of, I have a question. Should that be, should that, those, should that happen here? Should that happen at MP and EDC? I mean, what's the proper venue for that type of, you know, sort of?
I, I think it's here because it's going to be us putting it on. It's, it's, it's whether we decide to sponsor it as a select board article on the warrant or whether we tell them, based on the input we got from the community, unless, you know, unless you're willing to do these changes to your proposal, you need to move it forward as a citizen warrant article. But I mean, timeline's short, right? It's November 17th. Can we squeeze it in before then?
An additional discussion on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, that would probably, I think our next discussion on this is November 5th.
Okay. And that would give Carol and her group time to submit it as citizen warrant article if we, if I, we didn't feel as a group that it came far enough toward what was acceptable to us.
So I'm sorry, what do you want to have happen before November 5th?
I, I'd love to agenda this and, and do some outreach to invite the business community to, to weigh in as sort of a last chance to weigh in. And give us their input on what's been proposed.
Okay, so through the chamber, do that?
Yeah, I think through the chamber or
Town website.
Maybe the Builders Association as well.
Okay. So just let them know we're going to be discussing it on November 5th and if they have input to provide it.
Yeah, and I would say if we don't have a lot of feedback in opposition to what they're proposing, then I'm, I'm kind of okay with it, but I just want to make sure that it's not just one business owner who has an issue with it. I want to sort of assess how much concern there is about what's been proposed, if there is more.
All right, rental car bylaw changes to regulate Turo and/or ride shares. I'm waiting on a summary of meetings that the licensing administrator has been trying to arrange with some rental car agencies and also ride, ride, an attorney, yes, guess that's representing some rideshare individuals. And it's, despite several emails from an attorney representing the rental car agencies, I guess a meeting has not been able to be set up. Licensing agent, agent has reached out a few times. So hopefully that will come to fruition very shortly. And she will provide a summary of what she thinks is being proposed. So that's underway. Outdoor lighting bylaw amendments. This is under review and this has to do with the existing bylaw that contains provisions regarding outdoor municipal lighting that are very difficult, if not impossible, for the town to comply with. And I know that DPW director has been working with the initial proponent of this to come up with something agreeable. So that's under review. Okay, home rule petitions. There's a list of pending home rule petitions in your packet. And I've included how often they've been at town meeting, as you can see, some are many times. And none of them need to be resubmitted for the 2026 Annual Town Meeting because the current legislative session does not end until the end of 2026. And I have been in contact, we've, we've had this confusion in the past of, are we supposed to resubmit them annually or what? So I have a definitive answer from Senator Sears staff person who has clarified it. Every even year. Every even year, odd year is when we, see, I already can't remember. It's the odd years that we want to get them in there for resubmital. There are a couple of new potential home rule petitions, the e-bikes that I mentioned. NP and EDC is working on something regarding its enabling legislation. And coastal resiliency districts is basically under review with natural resources and coastal resiliency. I think I might have some mass general law acceptances that have come in since I put this out into your packet, but I need to recompile them. Same with real estate. These are just a few of the items, and I think there are more that have come in since. But there is a conservation restriction for a portion of the Sherburne Commons property that needs to be approved by town meeting. That was a requirement of a several, many years ago, permit from the state that wasn't finalized. Somerset sewer needs area, we need authorizations to acquire easements. And by acquire, I mean potential taking, if need be. The airport has some potential conveyance of easements to Comcast for use of its property along Matosham Valley Road, and I'm told that that's a little bit complicated, so that's kind of under review as well. Other, the category of other, the coastal erosion structure approval in connection with the SBPF Town Project at Baxter Road. We'll have to decide if that is going to be proceeding or not, based on some of what we heard tonight from Vince. We have three, it may be more by now, housing articles. There's a year-round housing trust article, a fractional ownership article, and a good landlord tax exemption article. And I was asking, are those acceptances, are they bylaws, or what are, home rule petitions, what are they? So housing has provided me that information, but I don't, it came in later. So some housing articles, basically. And then some other financial and/or ballot questions. So these are going to take some additional discussion at a future meeting. Possible debt exclusions and/or capital exclusions for capital projects or real estate. Island home, we need to figure that out. And there are several items pending with our island home, including the survey that we mentioned under the announcements, some design reduction in design, some additional discussion with Sherburne Commons as to where the housing could or couldn't be relocated. There's an operational review of what the reduced design might look like. And we were going to get an update at some point, where we were sort of waiting for all these things to be compiled, to present them to you at one time. The closure costs, that was something that came up. And we have what that is and what the process is. So when that's all together, we'll come back to you, which hopefully will be once the survey results are compiled. Town employee housing, we reviewed this with you earlier in the fall, maybe a month ago or so. The Somerset sewer, the Somerset sewer needs area sewer extension, this would be construction. We already have the design funds, and the design is underway. Now, I've heard from some of you that we want to be very careful about what we put forward to the voters for debt exclusions. This is a big-ish one, $40-plus million, and it would be funded through the tax rate. I've asked our engineers what would happen if we, because this is somewhat dependent on state revolving loan fund, a loan through that funding source. And there are some consequences if we wait a year. And we have a lot of public outreach to do. But when we, we're going to be having, I think, an internal meeting in the next week or two to get a little update on this, and we'll be bringing that to you for direct, for input on that.
What are the loan rates? What are they running now? Do you, any?
I'm not sure. It's under 2%, I think.
Yeah. We mentioned, what was it, $4 million tonight over 20 years was about $1,006 extra, because we were talking $4 million, and we were going to save some money. So, you know, if you can get it at 2%, you're dropping it probably down under eight, you know, so.
The state revolving loan fund usually runs between 0 and 2.
Yeah, so.
But I'll find out what it's at. Okay, the school fields. So that's about an $18 million project. It's the fields, the track, and the, what's that thing called? The stance, thank you. And so I think we know that this is already having some discussion as to the type of field and type of track, asphalt versus some kind of surfacing, and turf versus natural grass. So there's a lot of discussion going on about this, and at some point, we need the school committee to propose to the select board what they want the debt exclusion to reflect.
Can I come, or you want to go, Tom?
Yeah, just a quick process question. Libby, would the school committee ask us to put it on the warrant?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
No, when I made a comment, I kind of stuck myself in the middle of this. I didn't mean to. But I used it as an example of sometimes you get recommendations from consultants. I used it on another issue, you know, and I didn't even know they were talking about it or this was ongoing, and saying, you know, they're going to recommend we do a big field with a, you know, with fences and et cetera, et cetera. And it would be a mistake, because that's such an unbelievable location for visitors and for players. And so I just, I didn't realize this was all going on at the time. They're going to do what they're going to do, but I think that this is, you know, I traveled all over the country and with my kids at times, and what we have is incredible. And so I think this is going to be very interesting as it goes forward. So anyway.
I have another process question. There is some kind of restriction around the select board intervening in school committee business, right? So I want to understand how, what our conversations at this board, are we pressing on that restriction at all? Like, I just, I want to understand from my own perspective, because I had someone reach out to me about the design, someone that I knew actually from my childhood, who does this for a living. And I was like, I don't, I don't know. I understand there's a, it's meant to be a firewall of sorts, and I just don't want to cross that firewall.
Yeah, I don't know how legal the fire, oh, John, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So the guardrail that you're talking about really has to do with the operating budget for educational services by the school committee. Town meeting cannot dictate how the appropriation is spent. It's really a bottom-line budget. The same doesn't, however, hold true with respect to capital projects. There's a much more traditional role that the select board and town meeting would have with respect to this kind of a capital project.
That's helpful, thank you.
And I assume we can have our own opinions as individuals as well. So, yeah, okay. Right. Yeah, and again, I wasn't doing it specifically for this. I was doing it as an example of something, so anyway.
Well, you said it, and then I got that email, and I was like, whoa, Matt was prescient.
I played soccer with him, and you babysat him, I think. So who knows?
Okay, Tom Nevers debris removal. This has been in the works for some time. We have already approved design, and this would be the actual removal. We're in the process of, we have a bid out, and we'll have to, actually, we'll have to give you an update about this. I think the bid is out, and we need the number in order for the permitting to proceed by Sorry, one month, yeah. So that is going to be coming to you, I think, sometime mid-November with a firm number. Loran Barrick's next phase, there are several phases to this project. We are in the process of preparing a complete update on all of the phases that have been completed to date, including funding and all of the repairs and improvements that have been made. And that will be provided as an update to you, also in response to public comment from last week. It's very comprehensive, and we are considering, maybe the board would like to take a tour out there and see what all has been completed. So that's sort of in progress. Capital exclusion, those would be one-year capital projects that typically come through the Capcom, Capital Program Committee Review Process vehicles and things of that nature. So we don't have that list yet. And then other sort of financial things, but not debt exclusions or valid questions, would include establishment of an electric charging station revolving fund. And that would be for the funding that we are, the fees that we are charging for the electric charging stations. And those funds could be used for maintenance and other things like that. We have discussed amending the beach management revolving fund to allow for coastal resiliency projects, once all of the expenses associated with the beach management program have been allocated, so that we don't cut into those things for coastal resiliency. This is just an additional, this would be probably for smaller types of projects, but it is something that the Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee requested. And the Health Director has requested a renewal of the septic loan betterment program of $2 million. We've done this two or three or four times in the past. And lastly, the deadline, I already mentioned earlier, for citizen articles is Monday, November 17th. So sometime after that, we'll have an update for you of what those articles are.
Any other questions or comments?
If there's anything you all have thought of that I didn't mention here, let me know.
Libby, I just want to put a pin in something kind of random, going back to coastal resiliency districts. I remember talking to, I don't remember, it was Rep. Mocley's staff or Senator Seers, but did bring that up when we discussed it a while ago. And it's a thought that they've had as well, because it's obviously going to affect other towns on the Cape and Islands. So when Senator Seer and Rep. Mocley come for legislative update, maybe we can ask them about it and see, because it might be easier if it's a, you know, a state thing, exactly.
And I know that our coastal resiliency coordinator has been communicating with Representative Mocley's office about that, and has provided input. But yes, we can definitely add that to their visit.
Is there anything else? I'm going back to the good landlord. When we are researching that, we should look into how and does it impact, there's a lot of businesses that are housing, and people are renting, and they're renting rooms or renting houses from businesses. Are they eligible? And how are the rules written? Do you know that?
No, I don't know. But can we move forward with adopting it and then not implement it until we've done some more analysis? In other words, get permission to implement it from the voters, but then take time to do some serious analysis with the assessor and the finance department about the impact? Because we take a dollar from here, it's got to come from somewhere else. So we want to just be super careful about how broadly we allow that and the impact on other taxpayers.
Yeah, but I think this is like, which came first, the chicken or the egg?
Right.
Do we do our homework before we say vote for it? Or do we understand it before we ask the people to vote for it?
Good.
Well, that's, exactly. And so, because you know those questions are going to happen, you know, at the town meeting and the, you know, lead up to town meeting, and people are all going to go, oh, is this going to apply to me? And how will it apply? And, you know, so.
But I think if we signal it as we'd like to put it in our toolbox, and then we can decide whether to apply the tool with further discussion from the community, I don't know. Do they want, good question, Matt.
At your next update, we can have, and the housing staff, I know, is online, but I don't know if they're prepared to respond to this right now. But we can definitely have them attend your next meeting on this.
Yeah, no, I just, I think it's, it's going to be something we're going to get asked, so. Okay, is there anything else on these tonight? Okay, we're moving on. We are at review adoption of.
Oh, he, he probably heard me say that he was online.
Who was it, Dylan?
Yeah.
Oh.
Hi, everyone.
Do you have an answer, Dylan?
We don't have an answer for the, but we're not prepared to speak to the specific exemptions right now, but we'd be more than happy to come next week with an answer prepared to fill everybody in on that.
All right, great, thank you.
Of course.
All right, so review adoption of slugboard comments for the November 4th special town meeting? All right, the, so, you know, our options are we don't comment, or we comment positively, or we comment negatively. We can, they've got sort of two different comments from FinCom versus the planning board. The planning board was 3-2. And so I think that's, it's sort of, you know, what is our, what is the board's feeling on these? And, you know, should we be commenting and supporting or not? So I'm opening it up, I have my feelings, but I'm opening it up for your feelings first.
Yeah, I jotted some feelings down. Did you ever find my card?
Uh, no.
He said he jotted some feelings down.
I will walk Verk.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Verk.
Okay. So, so when we went around, you know, about whether or not to hold a special town meeting, a select board organized special town meeting for short-term rentals, it was an interesting evening. There were a lot of feelings. And I implored the community to get out and try to come up with a compromise article. And then a group called a special town meeting, and they, you know, they represent Article 1, which is more of the full codification. I have personally supported the concept of full codification and zoning and regulation in the general bylaw since day one. That has been where I've been at. However, I think that the community responded to, I think I implored the community to get out and talk to each other and try to come up with something. And I think really what we have before us is a juxtaposition of two paths that represent fairly significant ends of the spectrum of thought. And I think that I would be loath to comment, I would not vote to comment on any of them, because I think this has always been a question for town meeting. And I think town meeting needs to decide what direction to go. Either, you know, we now have sort of A and B instead of A, B, C, D, E, F, and G in front of the voters. So I would, I would be hesitant to comment from the select board level. I think FinCom's weighed in on the financial implications, and I think zoning, the planning board has done their thing. And my only comment would be thank you to everyone for the work they've done to get us to, I think, a more A and B choice than we've ever been at in this debate for many years. And I applaud that, and that would be my comment, and then that it is the voter's decision.
Okay, thank you. Malcolm?
Yeah, well, first, I have to thank the people that worked on this, because they certainly spent a lot of time, and I think it showed a lot of leadership on their part, because I don't think they themselves actually supported everything that they recommended. That's true compromise, and that's true leadership. And I also have problems of endorsing these articles. We certainly had a great deal about the consequences of Article 2, to the point where we had doom and gloom that we'd lose our bonding rating at some point, which I think is a little extreme, because any model projection is only as good as the assumptions of the model, and that includes all possible variables. And I won't bore you tonight with a long lecture on modeling and simultaneous equations and sensitivity analysis, which none of these, for all, we never see any of that. So everyone always kind of takes their model and kind of pushes it the way they want it to come out. I'm sorry, that's the way it is. So if we had a formal analysis of Article So if we had a formal analysis of Article 2, I think it's only fair we'd have a formal analysis of Article 1. And we've never really had that. And I can give you some just my assumptions or questions that need to be answered, if we support Article 1. Because remember, Article 1 is zoning, and we're stuck with it. We're stuck with it for almost ever, to a, to a large degree. How many more short-term rentals will be created by Article 1? Will the island become one hotel? How many year-round properties will be lost? And I'll talk about that later. If people move and cannot find long-term rentals of houses that used to be long-term rentals, and I know two examples specifically, and we have more and more of these, we talk about potential revenue loss, but what will actually happen to town? What's the long-term revenue pros and cons of Article 1? Supposing we lose all these people, we don't need a big government anymore. I mean, we'll just have Libby, and she'll manage everything, which she probably already does, but to a point. We won't need all this bureaucracy. I could go on. But I am told, and it's suggested by people, if we do have this article, oh, well, we'll get regulations later, we'll regulate it later. Well, I'm sorry, we haven't been able to regulate anything for the last four or five years. So I have no faith that if we passed Article 1, that sometime along the line, we'd actually get regulations passed to regulate it. And it will have all those potential problems I mentioned, that I don't think have ever really been analyzed. I think the island, in many ways, is becoming a commodity for investors. It's becoming such that it's less and less a community caring and personally invested in the island. I mean, we have capital appropriations, I saw, for expanding the private jets at the airport or something. You have to tell me that sometime, something is not going right here. And I'm not sure if short-term rentals is all the problem, we have to consider it a possibility. Renting your home is an Nantucket tradition. I definitely agree with that. Yes, but using your property primarily for a short-term rental is a business and should be regulated as such. There are many factors contributing to our housing crisis, and I have not been convinced, though, that there's little or no effect from short-term rentals. As they say, look at the capital appropriations for more jets. There's something wrong, I'm sorry. There's a family house near me, there used to be a family house, it's now a short-term rental. There's an old property that was bought recently renovated, multiple rooms, now on the market for millions of dollars. No Nantucket will buy it, and no one needs eight or 10 rooms. The tragedy to me is that house, even though it was owned by what we'd call a summer resident for years and their family for years, that house was a sanctuary for a lot of people during the year and off and on. And there's a very famous Nantucketter, they used to have to live there, and it's done a lot for this community, is no longer here. Those type of properties are going. So, and one more thing, and my colleague up here, the lawyer, I want to emphasize again, I don't think we've really had a meaningful debate and discussion about the Commerce Clause. Eighty percent of the short-term rentals on this island are owned by off-islanders. In my view, full-time islanders should be able to rent anytime, anyplace, anywhere they want to. In other words, there should be no regulations on a long-term, full-time resident here. That is an island tradition, all right? Rent as you please. And I think we have to find a way to protect our true, full-time, full-time summer, summer residents. And so a lot of attorneys disagree with the fact that perhaps we have to worry about the Commerce Clause. Newport, Rhode Island, has differential regulations. And I understand that the Third Circuit Court has recently issued a decision that supports discrimination if local needs justify. So in summary, I'm not particularly happy with any one or two. I think one has long-term consequences that we really haven't studied. And number two, I think is a little too restrictive in some ways for our local people that live here all year round, and we should protect them. So I will go with Brooke, and I won't, I will not comment on A. If I had to, if I was, I would not support one, I would support two, because it is a compromise. It is, after all these years, people in the community from both sides getting together and actually coming to some kind of resolution. I'm not totally happy with it. Maybe Tom and Brooke are better compromisers than I am. I tend to get very opinionated. So that's how I feel.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any comments? Well, I think, what I will say is, some people are saying that, that two isn't a compromise. That's, that's one of the charges. And I don't believe that at all. I was, you know, I was, I wasn't as involved necessarily as Tom, but I think, you know, I was sort of charged with pulling people in line occasionally and et cetera. And, and it was not, it was, it wasn't just what Arthur Reed came here. There were other concerns that popped up that were addressed through it. There was a lot of, you know, I think Dave calls it horse trading. And I give him, Dave, and I give Tom, and everyone that worked on this, a lot of credit, because this is a very emotional issue. People feel very strongly. I think the numbers, I agree with what you're saying, Malcolm, about the numbers. That was, what we had from Brian was, was really good for what it was, but that was, you know, it was a little bit inflammatory when you read it at the end. But he, he's looking at it from, that was looking at it from a budgeting perspective. And I appreciate that Brian is really conservative and makes sure that we are not overcommitting, et cetera. What it wasn't, though, is sort of what you're asking for. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't full-blown economic analysis. We should have that, if we had more time. I know some people are working on it, but if we had more time, we might have that for one and for two, and to be able to have that, have that conversation. But we don't have more time. I think that things that that didn't include, that Brian's thing didn't include, it didn't include the expense, it was the, it didn't include expenses, an estimate of the impacts over either, for either one or two. It didn't account for new units that were added. So if we have a renovation or a new house, that wasn't in the, in the, in there. It wasn't included non-compliant, people that haven't signed up yet, and that could be 5%, 10%. So that income wasn't included in that number. There's going to be rentals. People are gonna adjust. The market adjusts, like they're sort of renting for longer periods now, even after COVID. The market will adjust. It didn't include that owners are going to migrate between, you know, if someone is now going for 56 days and they can only do 49, those, the next seven aren't going to go away, they're going to go to somebody else. So we weren't going to lose all of them. We're not going to lose, you know, 2.5 million. You know, we're going to lose something maybe, but maybe not. Like depending how many have actually signed up or not already. And so I think that, and there were other things, but those are the types of things I'm thinking were not included. I think when you look at the, the, the numbers that ended up, the 70 and the 49, those numbers were, are taking care of, you know, 95% of people are not going to be impacted. You know, it really was, it really was an attempt, you know, to do that. I think the, the one huge positive that didn't really get a discussion at, either at the FinCom, you know, so, because we're talking about the costs, we are subsidizing housing now, and we increasingly have to subsidize more. And one of the things that we didn't talk about was the, you know, positives, if we took, if we, that in number two, it was expanding the definition of a hosted stay. So a hosted stay wasn't just someone living in your house. A hosted stay, and you, you could be unlimited if you had someone living in your apartment, someone living in your cellar. And so that, in that person, then you would have it unlimited. So I think the people who want to rent unlimited and want to rent more would have an incentive to, to have a garage apartment or have another rental. And I think that I would make that trade. I think that that would actually add housing stock without us having to pay for it. I think that people who actually need to do it would actually do it. That, you know, if you, there's a saying, you know, show me the incentive, and I'll tell you what the outcome will be. If we did that, I think it would actually help. And so, so, you know, and I would trade, if you put a teacher or a baker or, you know, or someone else in, yes, candlestick maker in there, I would trade, you know, I would trade that. And say, okay, you can do unlimited, because you're housing somebody. And the person housing might actually save some money on a caretaker and not have to have his caretaker go buy as much. He'd have someone living on site year-round. So I, so I think that there's a lot of positives. I would hope that, that, you know, when we have that conversation, that that, that the housing people really look closely at that. I think it was a, a really important part of Article 2 that really didn't get any conversation in the midst of everything. So, you know, what I would, what I would like to see, I would like to see us support the Planning Board recommendations. I never thought I'd say that, but here I am saying that. Sorry, sorry, guys, but no, and I think, because if we don't, I think some of, I think the financial analysis that was done is going to be waved around at town meeting and, see you guys don't support it, you're all against it. You know, even if we take, even if we're neutral, I think people are going to think we're against it. It was a 3-2 vote. I would like to see us, you know, support their recommendations. And all this stuff is going to be hashed out at town meeting floor, you know, in, in the lead-up. And so I just think it would show leadership. I think it would show support for some people who did a lot of work to even get us to here. And, you know, and there's probably some more work to go. So that's where I am on it all.
Yeah, ma'am, I keep doing that. I'm such a man of habit.
Yeah, that's all right.
Mr. Chair, I, I tend to agree with you. I think we have a tradition of supporting other boards. There's been many times, the ZBA has done things I haven't agreed to, and I've supported them. When push comes to shove, same with the HTC, Planning Board, et cetera. I don't like Article 2, but I could endorse it over one, let's put it that way.
So how I, how I've been looking at it is, I think one is, is a version of codification again.
It's the same thing.
And I think two is, you know, is just a small tweak, you know, it's a small tweak that will discourage, you know, it's, that will hopefully discourage unlimited. You know, it's just trying to put guardrails on, it puts light guardrails on. And, and so I don't, but that's my take on it. Tom, do you have?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just add a couple things. This has been really tough, that this, since, so what happened is, I think there was a bunch of misconceptions out there around how this came about. So after our select board meeting, when we were talked about the mediator, and that didn't happen, I called up Dave the next morning. I said, Dave, you and I are on short-term mental work group, we've thought about this for ages, it's caused you a bunch of stress and all of us a bunch of stress. If you want to meet with some folks and try and gauge where opinion is and see if there's any new ideas, let's give it a shot. And some people reached out, we reached out proactively, people, and we started meeting with them over, over the summer months. Did we meet with everybody? Did we meet with every stakeholder? Absolutely not. So, and when the special town meeting got called, which is, of course, they're right, and there is, there is some questions out there for the real estate community, et cetera, about contracts and refunding and clients and all that, totally legitimate. Then the special town meeting got called, and everything went into overdrive. And I think the worry was, at least my worry, I'll just speak for myself, was that if there were one article, the planning board hearing that was in this room the other day, would have been this, instead of it being four hours of the way it was, would have been, oh, it's many hotels on every corner, and we're going to get out and vote against this. And so what, in my mind, what this does now, whether you like to or not, is that it gives the community a binary choice. And it, and so, well, going back for a second, my, my involvement was not for the select board, it was not for the town, I was not speaking for that. It was basically to go there and support Dave and to meet with some folks and see where, and see where we're at. So this article basically comes via citizens to the, I know we get, get into process and, well, why did the planning board do it? Well, maybe in a different timeline, maybe in a perfect world, this would have been a citizens' warrant article, and it, but that's not the way it turned out. So, so where we are now, October 15th, is that we have a judge's decision that says X. We have two articles, and Article 1 is on the warrant as Article 1, and that will have an up and down vote. If that doesn't pass, we go into Article 2, and then folks can have a chance to debate that fully, take into account Brian's, excuse me, the finance director's feedback, FinCom's feedback, Planning Board, all the public hearings, everything that we've said, all the letters to the editor, all that stuff, and have that debate. And maybe that's, maybe that's amended, maybe that's amended on the floor, maybe it's shot down, maybe it's tabled. But at least we have that debate, because otherwise, it's a roll of the dice with the appeals court and further on. So I, my involvement, my really, my MO was to just, as evidenced by tonight, by long, great presentations from the DPW Director and, and Andrew on PFAS and all those things. The town has so much stuff going on at all times, so many important things, these collision projects, we're looking at potential, what, a billion dollars a project? We're not going to do them all, but billion dollars of projects over the next 10 to 15 years. We have got to get through this. It's divided our community. It's, I've, I've lost friends over this since, since this Article 2 has come out. It's been unfortunate. I know this has been really hard for Dave and the Planning Board members and, and other folks in the community. So I, I agree with, with what Brooke said. I have always been a codify in general bylaw. That's what we were advised all along. Article 2 is not what I would do, these are not, neither what I would, what Tom would do. But this is where we're at, this is what inaction has caused, meaning that we've got to a point in the judge's decision, this is where we're at, we're staring at this, the town has got to figure out, town meeting has got to figure out where we actually stand on this, whether it's Article 1 with, I'll just say no more restrictions or at least amount of restrictions, or Article 2 with some form of restrictions, either as is or debated or tabled, and then we'll see. So I, I would support not making a comment for exactly the reasons that, that Brooke and largely Malcolm laid out, because I think it's largely said in the Planning Board and FinCom's comments.
I think we need to be clear that both of these articles will solve, you know, will solve the zoning issues. Both of them are important. It would be a real shame to go to town meeting and, and not solve that, you know? I, I think, compare this to some of the information that we just received on PFAS, et cetera. The work that we got on a lot of that, we're doing the work, and we're getting the information, and there's a level of comfort that we can rely upon. What has been really unfortunate in this is that we don't have the homework done. We have, you know, it has been pushed back toward, you know, toward individuals. And then it's, and then people don't accept, oh, you know, the, you did it, Matt? Well, that can't be right. Or the real estate did it, they can't be right. It, it has been, it hasn't, you know, we haven't really tackled it, you know? And so anyway, I think that that's, that's part of what has tripped us up. So, and, and I would like to see us, and I think that there are impacts, and I don't believe that short-term rentals are the cause of all the issues and, you know, 100% or whatever, but there, they are a percentage of some of the things we are dealing with, especially with affordable housing. And, and so I, you know, with the loss of these neighborhoods and with the loss of, you know, year-on homes, once it goes out, it doesn't come back. And, and we are, I think that we are somewhat taking a blind eye to that, because people are so reliant on them in their businesses to do various aspects. And I think we, you know, I don't, I think that you, you can look at a lot of other communities, and, and they are, they are linking this. You know, there was some stuff from Mount Desert Island today that I read, that you talk, you look at all, there's all different places that are really struggling with this. We're further along than they are in our struggles. And, and, but we are, you know, how do you say it? We're out hunting whales, and there aren't, there were, there are not very many left. And we're probably going to keep hunting them till we've killed every one of them, is how I view what we're doing right now. I view that we are doing the same thing that we did then, and that we're, you know, we're going to so, you know, so make it, make a decision that is predominantly economic. The island was formed as a corporation, you know, that's in our DNA, we're going We're going to go down with the whales, you know? So, that, that's what I worry that we're doing, and that we aren't stepping back and saying, what would be a sustainable model? And how can we model this so that we have some more, you know, so there's an incentive to build, you know, build units around the island? How can we slow the incentive so that we aren't having wealthy individuals coming in knowing they can do this as, you know, everywhere on the island? You know, I, I think that Malcolm had it exactly right when he said that the impacts of one haven't been looked at. He, we haven't.
Nope.
And so, you know, so I worry that we are, you know, we're going to get every whale we can. So, it, it doesn't seem like we're going to get a, is there, are there anyone with a motion? Are we going to end?
Mr. Chair, could I just make one tiny little comment about the discussions about financial analysis? I, I just want to emphasize, the finance director did not provide a financial analysis. He provided an overview of potential impacts if Article Two were to pass. That, that's all it was. There was obviously no time to conduct the comprehensive type of analysis that is being discussed here. So, he certainly did the best he could, and it's very conservative because that's his job. And I, I know you all understand that, but I want to make it clear.
No, and I, and I'm sorry, if I didn't make that clear, that's what I said, that's my point, too.
It was just, there's a lot of discussion about what's missing from what was provided, and there, obviously, again, there was no time to gather all that.
But I think the people who are taking that and waving that around is, see, we're going to lose $2.5 million, it's the end of the world. I think that's why I'm talking the way I am, because we don't know what the impact is going to be. And I think it's really unfair. I worry, because of that and because of the vote of the Finance Committee, I worry that people aren't, aren't going to understand the nuance of this, and they're going to take that as gospel. So, that's why I have the pulpit, I'm, I'm having my say. I think there is a lot that we still need to know, so.
If I may follow up, sir. Yeah, Libby, I, I think Brian is a great guy, he needed a great job, but as I pointed out, he didn't have all the information. But the problem, my colleague here said correctly, people are waving this around. Like I said before, everyone takes some piece of data that's not vetted, that's not been challenged, and they only show half of it. That, for the last four years, that's all I've seen. And no one has ever sat in the room with all the information at the same time and had a real debate. And town meeting is certainly not the place to do it. And remember, Article, I'm going to repeat myself, Article One, yes, we should codify and regulate, but we haven't been able to regulate. We haven't been able to come to any consensus of regulations. So, the worst thing to me would be pass Article One and say, oh, don't worry about it, we'll just pass some regulations. Well, we're, I don't think we're going to be able to do that. I'm sorry. We haven't done it for five years. Enough said.
It's a little more complicated than that, because the zoning question has been tied up with the general bylaw regulation question. They have, there have been too many versions of this over the last number of years. It has been, this is, this is two paths to solving the issue of the uncertainty in our zoning bylaw. Either one of these passes, we will then be able to deal with, do we need to regulate further if Article One passes? And if Article Two passes, what are the impacts as, as people are, people have made so many claims on this issue, because it is, we don't have, we, we will never have the kind of information we need, because every individual property owner is making an individual decision based on their personal circumstances, whether they are an investor, a year-round family or a, or a generational summer family. What's happened is, I've watched this compromise being put together, there are people at the edges who are going to be hurt by this. And, and there will always be. And all we have to do is get, we will never be able to quantify when there's so many variables, as you brought up.
I agree.
So, so, so now we have a point in time where we are at risk at doing nothing, that I believe is going to press town meeting into action. I hope press town meeting into action one way or the other. I don't know what direction that is going to be. And, and the timeline is such, we're never going to do the analysis. Here we are. So, it, it's.
If I might just follow up, we'll never be able to do the analysis. We're just, it'll never happen. But I'm a skeptic, I'm sorry. We can pass Article One, but will we ever agree on regulating it correctly? That's my concern. And I don't want people to get sucked into this notion of, oh, well, pass Article One, no problem, then we'll just sit down and we'll all get together and have some regulations. Come on, we're, we're debating Article Two as regulations.
You have to remember, if I may, Mr. Chair, the threshold for zoning is two-thirds. The threshold for regulation in the bylaw is 50%. It's a different threshold. The two have been conflated together with different percentage numbers required at town meeting. I'm not, I'm not arguing one way or the other. I'm just saying, we've mixed all this up in a way. We have a town meeting with two articles on it. Let's see what happens. It's up to, it's up to town meeting.
We'll see what happens.
And our recommendations have served no purpose or value to date, just saying.
Yeah, people, they listened, didn't listen to us about not running a town meeting, that's for sure.
Today. So, so that's why, that's another reason I'm like, I want to weigh out. I don't want to put my thumb on the scale here, I want to let the voters decide.
Yeah. Well, do we have? Well, I mean, I would love to see a motion, but I don't, it's not going to, you know, I think we, I think it's clear where we stand. It would be 2-2, and it wouldn't pass. So, I think that's the direction that's going to town meeting. I don't, I don't, you know, we're having the, we're, we're emotional and tied up with this as much as the community is, is.
That's true.
Look, that's, and just like the, you know, just, just like the, the Planning Board was 3-2, they were split fairly evenly, you know, along the same lines. I think the FinCom, you know, they even had, that was a little bit less split, but I think that was, you know, the thumb was put on the scale a little bit there, because, you know, but that's, I think that there is, you know, we're going to, we're going to be dealing with this at, at, at town meeting. And, yeah. And, and it's, and I think it's, I think it's unfortunate. I do believe that, you know, all right, because I know, I know that, you know, one side has come off, has really, has really come off what they wanted. You know, they wanted one day less than. And I talked about that here when we had everybody in. And I said, you know what? One day less than is, you know, we're beating a dead horse, and full codification, we're beating a dead horse. You guys come together and find the middle. And I feel like one side has really made an effort to come off, come off and, you know, and, and drew as many people in and did as much as they could. And I, you know, and I give Dave a lot of credit for doing that, because that was not easy, to wrangle all those different personalities and different people and, and bring, bring something forward that I think is, you know? So, I, I give him credit for that. I hope that, you know, we don't go and just blow it all up again, so. And I, and I, my, in my opinion, is if we would take a position, it would be less likely to do that, but we aren't going to, so I'll move on.
If you want to, we can, we can make a motion for the record, but it's going to be 2-2.
Yeah, it's going to be 2-2.
Or 3-1 or something. You know, if you want me to make a motion, make a motion, and if not, we go on.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone would second it, so.
Yeah, well, I'd second it, but we'd go to, yeah. So, neither are you changing. You, you, you don't want to put up, you don't want to make a decision, right? You're not going to make a decision, you don't want to make a comment. Yeah, you had, yeah, Tom has made it clear. So, so we, we don't need to vote, it's 2-2, so.
Mr. Chair, I just, I think that, that it's, we have two articles on the warrant. It's a binary choice, and there's a chance to, for the community to talk this out. And if there's inaction, then we, we collectively roll the dice with the, the courts further weighing in. That's really where we're at.
Oh, completely.
I, I don't think it necessarily, I agree with Brooke. I don't think it necessarily matters. I mean, it matters where we're at, right? Because that's where we're elected to do, is to take stands on this. But, you know, if we were going to design an article, which we've sort of tried to do two or three times, that's not where we're at tonight, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's move on. Do we have any committee reports?
Not today.
Anything?
May I move to adjourn?
I'll, I'll give you, I have one. There was, I'm on the Polis Harbor Committee, and it's something I've been on for four or five years, and I didn't even know what it was, because I'm like all.
I didn't even know there was the committee.
I'm on it, and I didn't know what it was. So, anyway, recently, I, it became to my attention that it has to do with Polis Harbor and Community Sailing and Conservation Foundation. And so, there, I've met with, Jim Luntowski used to call the meetings to keep things, you know, keep everything copacetic out there. I have met with the homeowner, homeowners out there, I've met with Community Sailing, I've pulled Cormac into it, and there's some discussions going on into doing some, you know, bringing back some of the things they had and making some changes that I will bring in the future to the board. So, thank you. Now, I'll take it.
Mr. Chair, Malcolm, you were talking about data and variables before. You must miss the Board of Health, because that was your, you know, that was your chance to really.
You know, 14 years is enough.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.